Tonight is February, Tuesday, February 23rd, and we do have a call this meeting to order. Due to the current federal emergency declarations and guidance about limiting person-to-person contact due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting of the Dyna Public School District School Board has been conducted online in accordance with Minnesota Statute 13D021. Participants are reminded to mute their microphone or phone when they are not speaking. Participants wishing to speak should unused their microphone or utilize the raise hand feature. So I can see who is waiting to speak and then wait to be recognized. I will determine the order in which board members wishing to speak will be recognized. Tonight on our agenda is an update to discuss a secondary learning plan the administration is planning to implement. Secondary schools comprise both the middle and high school. The elementary schools will not be impacted by this update. Before we move into discussing the model itself, I want to make sure both the community and fellow board members are aware of the process our district undertakes when shifting learning models. Because this can vary from school district to school district. In July, our board unanimously passed Policy 308, which basically states that the board needs to be informed of learning model changes such as what we are receiving tonight. But we do not vote to approve learning model changes. If the board disagrees with the change the district wants to make, we can give direction to revise portions of a plan, or ultimately, we can vote to change the model suggestion. Additionally, new and/or modified learning plans can be approved in various ways from the state of Minnesota. And Nick Kelly, who is our liaison with the Bloomington Department of Health, will be addressing the approval of our learning plan. Other school districts in our state might have their learning plans approved via a regional incident command team, or control team, sorry. Or directly from the Minnesota Department of Education. Our district does not need to go through either of these processes. I want to ensure our community understands we are not missing any critical steps to implementing learning models. These are just different channels to getting learning models approved. I am now going to turn the meeting over to Superintendent Schultz, who I believe is going to then turn it over to Nick Kelly. But right now, I'll turn it over to Superintendent Schultz.
Thank you, Chair Allenberg. Hopefully, everybody can hear me. Is that right? Okay. So first of all, just to provide some context, I don't want us to forget the context we're in. We are still in a pandemic and meetings I've had with Governor Walz, with superintendents. It has been clear that we are in a pandemic and we do need to think differently about how we do school. What our plan that we're presenting stands new guidance from the Department of Health as well as the Department of Education. Where we can decrease the six-foot distance or the three-foot distance. However, that's qualified that if we can do six feet, we should do six feet. What we're about to try, we haven't done before. Bringing students in during a pandemic. And I believe the plan that we are presenting today is a balance between providing a great educational model and at the same time, keeping students and staff safe. But I do want to emphasize, this is a new territory. A pandemic is a very challenging situation in nature, and it's also unpredictable. I would never promise that we would stay in this. And it may be as the, how that virus behaves, it may require us to change again. So I just want to put that down as a as the context that we find ourselves. Secondly, Jerry Allenberg alluded to the process. We do have weekly meetings with our COVID. Nick Kelly is our epidemiologist that sits on that. He gives us great guidance along with Bianca Verneg, who is also from the Department of Ed and helps us out with some of our environmental safety. So tonight, I'm going to give Nick the chance to, or give Nick the opportunity to share where things are at with regards to the virus and the vaccine. And then we will, Nick does have to go to another meeting, so I think we'll stop after Nick has presented and see if the board has any questions of Nick. Nick, of course, will talk about, has been part of the decision-making regarding the regarding the learning models. After that, we will, I'm going to ask Jeff, or excuse me, Eric, to talk a little bit about some of the mitigation, things we're doing in the buildings. Jeff Jorgensen, we're going to begin rolling out some assessment evaluation around mental health. And then give Randy the opportunity to talk about the plan along with our secondary principals. We also, I want to just thank all of our students who are here tonight. If you could all wave, all the students wave. It would have been kind of fun if you were all in the same row. I could have called bingo. All right, dad joke. So the principals will introduce the teachers. They're going to give us a perspective on what the week looks like is in hybrid, as well as what they see the week looking like when we begin our model that we're presenting tonight. So with that, Dr. Nick Kelly, can I turn it over to you?
Thanks, Dr. Schultz. I prepared a statement to help kind of set the context for where things are going and where the future is going. So I'm not going to reread the statement that the board has, but just to reiterate that we are still dealing with a lot of variability. Things can go really well, or things could go much more challenging in the coming weeks. Time will tell what's actually going to happen and how that's going to work. One of the things that I'm concerned and focused on is the variance that we see. And so we see the variance moving forward in Minnesota and around the United States. It is entirely possible that that may, may not be a major issue. It's also entirely possible that as the CDC notes, it may require a change to how we do learning models and the protocols and procedures be put in place. We don't know the answer to those questions right now. That will happen here in the near future. One of the things that is going to help with that is the reality that more and more educators are going to be vaccinated. So by mid-April, I think we will see a large chunk of a Dyna staff with their second dose and therefore no longer subject to quarantine. In addition to the innovative testing tools that a Dyna is rolling out for their students, there's a lot of ability to manage what's coming with the testing for the teachers and the testing for students that will help make things more on a regular basis, but there's going to be some learning curves with that process. So I would anticipate March having some challenges with additional quarantines or disruptions, in part due to some of that work. But in the long term, that is going to help make things hopefully more stable, as long as cases continue to go down. I think it's important too, to just make sure people understand, the more students that are back in the classroom, that you're going to have more and more close contacts and it's going to be, there's going to be, we're seeing this in other schools, other districts where the more close contacts you have means that some of those exposures can result in much larger numbers of students that need to be quarantined after an exposure. So that's not something to be surprised by. That's just part of the reality of some of this process moving forward.
So I want to add one piece to this plan. You'll see in this plan that we've, we're rolling this out, beginning on March 8th, inviting students back the week of the 8th, the week of the 15th, the week of the 22nd. We're doing that on, on the advice of the COVID Incident Command Team. Because there are, gives time for immunization or vaccinations. It also gives time for us to understand how, how the population's going to respond when we bring them back into the secondary schools as we increase. Bringing kids back to see that we can manage any transmission of the virus. Just in learning how, how this is going to roll out. So I just wanted to add that as, as the basis for the of the program and the model that we're presenting. So did I interrupt you, Nick? Or are you, can you take questions?
I am happy to take questions and I think the, Dr. Schultz is absolutely correct. The part of the challenge with March is giving those, those systems and processes in place. We know that as the testing starts ramping up, we're going to find asymptomatic cases. And that's going to, the more lead time we can give into that before it's part of our routine process, the better off that process will be.
So any questions from anybody for Nick? Owen?
Nick, I have a question for you. You're talking about some in-school spread in some districts. Could you elaborate on this? I hadn't heard about that.
So it, it's the similar kind of process that we see where if you have a close contact, then you, you, if you have an individual student or staff member that tests positive, what you end up doing is identifying the close contacts. What we're seeing with some of the school districts that have already started back and there's, there's more students in the classroom than there were before. There's more close contacts. And so because we're, you're constrained a bit on the physical distance, that means there's going to be more close contacts. So if a student tests positive, previously, you'd be able to say, oh, clearly, you know, they're six feet away, they're not close contacts. That's going to be more of a challenge. And what we're finding is other districts are finding that there's a larger number of students that need to be quarantined as a result of that.
Okay, so it's greater close contact, but we haven't had spread. I'm just trying to draw a distinction between the two.
Yeah, it's, it's close contacts.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Other questions for Nick?
Ellen? Yeah, hi. Hi, Nick. I just have a question. I'd like you to try, help me understand and the community understand when the, just the process that's going on here. Our district is taking your recommendations and your guidance. And there are other districts that are in Hennepin County that are currently making the decision to open up for five days a week in person. And I'm just wondering, you know, for example, even you're in Bloomington, even the Bloomington Public School District has just announced that, that on March 11th, they'll open up to five days a week. And I'm just wondering what that process, how me, how I can understand and make sense of these, this difference that's, that's there, that we're, what we're hearing from you and what other districts are doing. Thank you.
Yeah, so the, the process works very similar. So I, I sit and support the, the school districts, as you mentioned, Bloomington and a Dyna. When they have incident command teams, we come in and we talk through the process, we go through operational details, we go through the reality of what's coming. And, and I provide the, the same public health advice. It's based on the Safe Learning Plan, it's based on CDC's guidance, and it's based on our case rates. And then the, the team comes to an operational decision of the best way to move forward. The, one of the, the challenges that I highlighted, that a Dyna has an opportunity, but it also is a, is a bit of a challenge, is you have an ability to do some testing among your students, which I think will extend your ability to do school. But there's going to be a challenge with testing that rollout has never, we've not done that. And so as that builds up and the capacity gets there, you don't want to rush that as fast. And so I pointed out that if you roll that out super quickly, you, you want to be very careful in how you do that. So there's value in doing that a little slower, more methodical, so that you can go longer versus trying to rush and push things quickly, so that you may run into some of those issues. And you may not run into those issues. And at the end of the day, it became an operational decision of this is, this is the best path forward for a Dyna, and that's what came forward.
Okay, thank you.
Ellen, maybe I'll share, because your question pertained to what other districts are doing. And we had Sarah call some school districts, we called Anoka, Eastern Craver County, Eden Prairie, Hopkins, Bonne Meade, Minnetaka, Osseo, Robinsdale, St. Louis Park, Wayzata, and White Bear Lake. And all, all, Minnetaka is yet to be determined. Bloomington, I think, is, is presenting theirs tonight. So I'm not absolutely sure. They might go four and a half with a late start, much like Orno has also done, kind of a four and a half day. Wayzata is doing four days, but their middle school's going five days. And the reason they're going five days is because they don't have teachers teaching in both the virtual and in-person. So that's why they are at five days. So I think all the other school districts are, have a four-day week.
Julie, did you have a question?
I did. I just want to make sure that I'm understanding, Nick. So really, the purpose of the rollout and bringing students back is to really get a better feel for how the, our population responds to the layered mitigation efforts. So that we have a really good handle on things as we bring in more students and we're doubling the capacity at the schools. More so than whether it's four days or five days, that's really a discussion for teaching, our teaching and learning part of this agenda, I would, I would think. Because it's more of an impact on what we're asking our staff to do and with our students in the learning models our students are in. Is that a fair assessment that I'm understanding?
Yeah, it, it, there, it became down more to the, the operational realities of it presents an opportunity for the kinks, the challenges, those things to be worked through. Very similar to when teachers started to be tested, you knew you're going to detect some asymptomatic cases and the it's nice to be able to do two weeks ahead of time to get all that stuff out of the system. If you don't have the ability to do that, you, you have the potential for some initial disruptions in that process. Booming a little slower helps you mitigate that. It, it doesn't mean you, you have to do that, but it, it provides more stability.
Got it. No, I think that makes sense. I just wanted to make sure that I understood that. And then the four to five day discussion, I know there's a lot of different factors that go into that. So I assume, I know we're going to talk about that a little bit more with the principals speaking. So, okay. Thanks, Nick.
Owen?
Nick, my question for you earlier was based off of the sensitivity that we'll have for contacts and what that'll do for quarantining. We received an email this afternoon that I thought put the, the concern that I have pretty well, I described it pretty well. Let me read just a portion of it here. Importantly, the CDC has found that longer quarantines place increased burdens and hardship on people, which reduces compliance. The shorter quarantines optimize outcomes by balancing potential for transmission with odds of compliance. In other words, a 14-day quarantine may result in fewer infections on paper. The short, the shorter quarantine results in better health outcomes in the real world because people are more likely to comply. So can you talk a little bit about if we're going to be changing our quarantining compliance, our quarantining thresholds? And I'm just a little concerned, are we, are these, are you seeing a lot of outbreaks, say, in Osseo? Are there outbreaks in Roseville? And is it, it's not outbreaks, it's people having contacts. And so the contact, we're, they're erring on the side of great caution. COVID is serious, but they're erring on the side of great caution. So there's sort of two, two parts. Do you know more specifics about that? And then secondly, could you describe a little bit more about where we're at with our quarantining thresholds?
So the, the quarantining process, the, you're correct, the, the CDC does have capability. They've provided that to states that you, you can reduce the duration of quarantine with certain conditions in place. The state of Minnesota has reviewed that and their recommendation is the, the best thing for public health is to still go with 14 days. That's the recommendation of local public health, my peers in the metro. That 14 days is, is the most protective thing we can do. And so I'm looking at it from a, we want students and staff to be healthy and safe. And, and yes, there are situations where you could potentially shorten it, but those are very caveated when in a school environment. The other challenge becomes from an equity or a capacity standpoint. You, to do some of those things, you have to provide testing. And so you have to be able to provide testing on a rapid, routine basis for anybody that is in that exposure category at a certain time point. Most places are finding that to be a challenge to be able to do that on demand. So the, the most protective way is to keep that 14. We also have seen studies that show, you know, up, you miss up to 20% of cases by not doing the 14-day. And so it's, it's a trade-off, as the CDC did articulate, that you get higher compliance by having less quarantine time, but you also run the risk of actually extending the quarantine time. So if you do it for seven or 10 days, and then people come back and on day 12, somebody develops symptoms, that whole classroom then goes back out for quarantine, again, for another 10, seven days. So it, it's a, it's a trade-off. The, the public health recommendation is to stay the 14. That's the preference of the state and ours too. And to your other question on, on outbreaks, we, we're seeing the same kind of things we saw in the fall. We're seeing outbreaks associated with sports teams and, and people eating out in, in restaurants. We're going to continue to see those, those clusters of cases show up. That's just something we're going to see more, more occurrences of as students are coming back in and having a lot more contact with each other and staff.
Is your concern allayed by the fact that community spread has gone down significantly in the last few weeks? Both in the county and in a Dyna itself?
It, it makes me more confident that we can do school for a longer period of time. It, it doesn't really change the, the quarantine or the, the likelihood of seeing cases popping up. There, when case rates are down in the community, we're going to have less of that introduction into the school. But the, the response on the other side, once that introduction happens, is going to be the same.
Okay. And then just to confirm something, I think I heard you say is we do as a district have the discretion to go with a shorter quarantine if we elect. Is that correct?
It's always a choice. And that's not, 14 days is not where public health would recommend.
Okay, thank you.
Ellen?
Yeah, I, and I, I kind of want to clarify something about the phased-in rollout that we were just talking about. I know that that used to be part of the Minnesota Department of Health's recommendations for schools, that we would only be able to roll out two grades at a time. And I believe that that was one of the things that Governor Walz changed in, on February 17th. And I don't believe that it is a part of any CDC recommendations. So I, so the, the, the way that, and manner that we bring our students back into school, that is totally at our discretion without any guidance from the CDC or the MDH. Is that correct?
You're correct that the, the rolling start was removed as a requirement. The, the CDC and MDH provide a lot of guidance and direction for how you, the best practices and how you should be doing things.
And, and it's, and it's just, it's not, they're, they're just not, they're silent on that now and they, they used to. So many schools are, have decided just at one time to start, start up again. And there's, there's no guidance on that anymore. I just wanted to make that point. The other one was, and I'm sorry, I, I am only speaking to the fact that parents in the community have received letters from their school district. So I mentioned Bloomington, receiving a letter from their school district saying that they had intent, intentions to open up five days, March 11th. And so that is, and I, I'm, I'm, I, I have seen that email. So I know that that's part of it. It may not have gone before their board yet. But there are other districts similarly that are contemplating that, whether or not that it has been seen through their board.
Janie?
Yeah, I have two, I guess there are two questions. So first, I kind of want to go back to what you said, Owen, about the longer quarantine possibly having less compliance. And I just wanted to get clarification on that. Are you, were you suggesting that we would have less students and teachers testing? Because we'd have, they wouldn't want to go into quarantine and say they were an asymptomatic positive? Is that part, is that the compliance piece that you were curious about?
Well, I think my major point is that I would recommend a seven-day quarantine rather than a 14 because of the the reality principle, if you will, that you're going to get better compliance out of it, that, so.
Compliance of the quarantine or compliance on testing? Or, you know, is it, testing is voluntary, but is it, which one is it, do you think is a bigger issue?
Compliance with the quarantine.
Okay.
And compliance, exactly, compliance with the quarantine.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to get clarification on that. And then Erica, I don't, I, I feel like we're kind of dipping our toes into the conversation about the whole philosophy of the staggered approach. And I, I'm just curious if we are going to talk about that right now, or should we wait to talk about that when Nick is done? Because I know he has to leave for another meeting. So it's one of the questions.
Okay. So anything that people have questions related that only Nick can answer, we should ask now.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then I'll hold off.
Jane, Julie, did you have another question?
Yeah, I just wanted to, yeah, just really quick off to, off of Janie's question. Is there, is there data that supports that we get, there's less cooperation with quarantine at seven days versus 14 days? Is there data to support that claim? From scientists, from our state, from our guidelines? That's where, I guess that question's for you, Owen, since you stated it. Like, where's the dat, where's the support from data to back that up?
I didn't know who you're asking. Apparently, it's the CDC, and there's a link in an email that we received this afternoon that is talking about it. So it's directly from the CDC.
But that's not, but, but then that was, so that was really, and this may be a question for Nick then. So that, that probably went into if the CDC suggested it went to the Minnesota State Guidelines, who, or the Minnesota, our Minnesota State experts to evaluate the guidelines. And there wasn't a switch, there wasn't a change, and their recommendation is 14 days. Is it fair to say that they considered that and that is not a factor in whether or not it's important to do it or not?
Yeah, I think there, there is a few different ways the CDC evaluated that data and then MDH evaluated it. You do have, you know, we, we hear it now where people say, I don't want to get tested because then I don't want to, you know, test positive and be out for 14 days. So you, you, you have some data that suggests you'll get an increased compliance with testing. It's, it is a not clearly defined process. We do see that some people struggle with the 14 days. Nobody wants to be told you can't do things for 14 days. And there, MDH did look at it and the best public health guidance is stay with 14. MDH did look at it and the best public health guidance is stay with fourteen days. There, there's some caveats where you can do it in shorter timeframes, uh but you know, on the school nursing calls and and the information the state's provided on the school side, a lot of those situations may not even be applicable. Um, you you run into some challenges with uh, you know, you can't, you can't be part of a family unit. Um, you can't have some of these other caveats going in and there need, it's very unique very specific circumstances where that applies. So it it may not even be applicable to many of the situations that you're talking about in a school setting.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted some more clarification. Thanks.
Um, Lenny? Go ahead.
Nick, quick question. CDC guidelines for secondary, that's still at six feet?
The CDC guidance is at six feet. It uh, it becomes as required at six feet at a certain threshold. Edina is under the threshold now where six feet is recommended, uh but not required. And it's it's the very similar language that you see in the state guidance where it it's required until you had a certain threshold where they drop it down, where three feet is the the absolute minimum that you have to have.
And so as we look at this, though, we should be balancing all of the factors. So for example, if we're gonna go less than six feet, then we probably wanna have a larger quarantine time period versus if we were gonna stay at six feet, we might be able to then go to a shorter quarantine period because you at least have the greater distance. Is that a fair statement?
Certainly one way to look at it. It's, you're basically looking at layers of mitigation and and the the more layers you have, the the better off you are.
Right. So if you take the most aggressive layer at every single point, then you're more likely to have a problem. More likely, not that you will.
I I guess it depends on if you, if you're, if you're taking any more aggressive and staying at fourteen and mandating six feet and, you know, aggressive on a public health intervention, you're, I would say you're less likely to have problems.
Oh, yeah. I I meant more aggressive as in seven day quarantine, three feet apart. That's what I meant by more aggressive.
Yep, I would agree with that then.
Uh, and also I think that the Bloomington email does not say they're gonna go to five days. It says they're gonna do a traditional and that the actual details are still being worked out. I actually just pulled it up again. It doesn't say five anywhere. Uh, and irrespective of that, the model that I would choose to follow isn't what another district has chosen, but I would choose to follow a model that makes the most sense for a district.
Janie?
Yeah, Nick, I just had a quick question. Um, it, correct me if I'm wrong, but don't kids have a longer incubation period than adults do? Is that, am I, is that true? Is that also part of the, I know, I'm guessing the CDC study about compliance had more to do with adults. And I had always thought that we had talked about kids having a longer incubation period.
Yeah, the the CDC's quarantine guidance didn't go into to age groups. Um, we do see a bit of ver- uh variability in in kids. Uh, there I wouldn't not necessarily say incubation period is something that we focus on much, uh but the more likely to be asymptomatic, especially at younger ages, is is definitely holds true.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, before I get back to um Ellen and Owen, I wanna go back to something that we talked about at the very beginning that Owen was asking about. And I just wanna make sure that um the community understands, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Nick, but that even though we're we're uh proposing reducing social distancing by three feet, the CDC and the MDH definition of a close contact still is six feet. And so as a school district, when we are making, going through the decision tree for quarantining and making a decision about what is a close contact, that hasn't changed. And so it's not up to the school district to change who we quarantine and what the definition of a close contact is, because that hasn't changed. We're still following the same guidance, which is less than six feet and more than fifteen, twenty minutes. Is that correct, Nick?
Yeah, it, the the guidance has not changed the, on what is a close contact. It's that six feet, less than six feet and a cumulative of fifteen minutes over a twenty-four hour period. And that, and that's where I get to, there's likely to be some larger quarantine sizes because of that.
And then so at our incident control team this morning, um we were, it was articulated to us that other schools that have reduced social distancing have seen a market increase in students that have had to be quarantined, especially in the secondary, because um over six or seven periods, you're in close contact with multiple students. And so I just want the community to understand that it's not Edina Public Schools making decisions about quarantining and sending students home. That's a definition that has not changed. Um, and that's another reason that I think from my perspective that it's important that we phase in and understand the effect on our student population, the number of students that are close contact. Um, and a follow up question I have to this, John, is that do we need additional health services workers if we are contact tracing? Um way more than we were before, because it sounds like that we probably will be. And I'm concerned about the ability of our health staff to keep up with um, the contact tracing that they might have to do.
I I, I I agree with that, Erica, and that's one of the reasons we are uh rolling this out slower so that we can um, determine what is needed and to see how uh the population's gonna respond to being together. Um, so we have um in the process of um, getting more health staff, we've uh, I don't know how the um hiring is going for that. Uh Nikki, are you on that? You can comment quickly on that?
Thanks, Dr. Schultz. I am on. Um, I do believe that um that Ms. Hyman has been had an opportunity to do some interviewing, but I do need to check further with her on the status of hiring for those uh few positions. So I can, I can provide the board an update as soon as I've had an opportunity to speak with her. Thank you.
So we have that uh in process, Erica.
Okay, thank you. Ellen?
Yeah, hi. This um, we've been getting an awful lot of emails, and so I am referring to a couple of questions that were asked of the board um by some teachers, and I just wanted to run them past um Dr. Kelly. Um, because I I I just wanted to understand a little bit more. Um, first uh was is about transparency, and that's a big issue for me. And also for these teachers, they were wondering why is the district not publishing COVID information on our website stating the number of students and staff in a building who've tested positive and are quarantining because of COVID? Um, and in the past, there had been discussion about um HIPAA. And I just wanted to um ask this question of Dr. Kelly, and then we can talk about this later administratively uh within the district, if it is um not a HIPAA violation to post numbers of um COVA, COVID um positives for building.
If it's HIPAA really is gonna depend on whether or not you're a covered entity. The other things to think through are the Minnesota Data Practice Act and and FERPA. There, there are are ways to share data that is not identifiable, uh but it it presents additional challenges.
Right. So um, when you go to other districts' websites, you can see these things are being um, reported. Um, and I'm just wondering if you're aware that if there are violations because of that, or if if there's anything that would hold us back from um being more transparent.
I've not heard any conversations about dashboards. That's not something that we're normally not talking with on our our public health calls with schools. It's data sharing happens at various levels. Um, we're not
Great, great. Thank you. Um, and
Ellen, Ellen, just uh, we are uh partnering with the city of Edina. And um, we are uh providing them with data to post on their city uh dashboard, COVID dashboard.
Has that started again?
We're, we're getting it started again.
So it's, so it's not yet. And and do we report, the the teachers wanted to know if we're going to be reporting by building?
So let's move this to the next section. Teen more minutes.
Okay. So, and so the other question that, and something that that the teachers had brought up, and I just am curious about this. I had never heard this, and I I don't know, maybe it's not being done, but um it has to do with uh teacher vaccinations. And are you aware of any clinics that have been set up to in by certain districts to vaccinate their educators?
Uh, I'm aware that some districts have partnered with local public health or other healthcare entities to vaccinate. Most of the vaccination of teachers in the metro has happened through state sites.
Right. Okay. So that that might be just another question for later. Thank you. Thank you, Nick.
Owen?
Erica, would this be the time to ask about testing, or will that come later in our meeting?
I think that will come later.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Nick?
Sorry, this is Matt real quick. Owen, is it about the state testing programs or what we've been looking into, the committee you've been on?
Both. And if if, if that's going to be affecting, if Nick, if you have anything to say about that, I'd, Matt and Nick, have you been talking at all? Since we do have Nick here and he's taking off in just a little bit, I was just wondering if there's anything relevant regarding our testing program and and Nick being here. Apparently not, so I'll I'll bring it up later.
Well, Erica, I don't, I don't, I didn't wanna, if Erica made a statement as porch, I don't wanna jump in differently with 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 Nick here. I wanted to make sure we answered it. So just from my standpoint, one sentence is we continue to move forward the program we presented to the board last week. Um, I think we're getting close. There's a lot of different things we have to get right with consents, insurances, dollars, all that stuff. So I would say that's close and still progressing. I would say one myth that should be completely debunked is that anything related to a testing program we would implement would slow or reduce students getting back to school. Nick, anything from the state level?
Not that I'm aware of that impacts that.
Thanks. Does that help, Owen?
Yes. Um, so Nick, are you in any way counting on our testing program to be a part of our compliance, part of the metrics that you're looking at, or is it just completely separate?
I think it's, it's gonna be very important and helpful in the process. And I think the the more widely it's used, especially among students and and teachers with the state testing, the the better off the the district's operations will be in the long term.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So it's one of those, hopefully it's a net positive, Owen, but not a, not a um, a destabilizing factor if it's not done widely. Sorry, Erica, just wanted to hit that while Nick was here too.
Nope. Um, anything else, Nick, before you go?
I'm very glad to see the the board is continuing to talk with the district on ways to work and support mental health and well being. Nobody asked to be making these kind of decisions or or dealing with a pandemic like this and keeping students' health and safety along with your staff, health and safety at the front and center is is something that I know you've done a good job at, and I am glad you're continuing to do that.
Erica, can I say one thing real quick? Just wanted to thank Nick. Next, just for public awareness, Nick's put in a tremendous amount of overtime with the testing committee and a lot of his efforts. So agree or disagree with recommendations from me, the board, anybody else, you can't disagree with the amount of work Nick's done. Um, so I just wanted to say thank you, Nick. Really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, Nick. We appreciate all your help. So.
Thanks. It's my pleasure.
Alrighty. Well, thanks. Thanks a lot, Nick. Um, so John, if you wanna continue with your uh presentation about the learning models.
Eric, could you uh jump in and talk about um just some of the mitigation uh you've been working on with facilities?
Certainly. Thank you, Dr. Schultz. Listening to um Nick Kelly and layers of mitigation is really what we're talking about here. So just back up a little bit. So seven years ago, we seven plus years ago, we started doing mechanical upgrades to our buildings. And over the last seven years, we've touched every building. And um when we touch those buildings, we um, improve the the filtration system. We make sure that the system's balanced so that air is distributed evenly throughout the building. We've been um improved control of the building. So when we say that we're bringing in outside air, we prove that we're bringing in outside air. Um, we're running our buildings on extra time, so we're, we're averaging about twenty hours a day to flush the buildings before people come and flush the buildings with fresh air after people are out. We're maximizing the outside air that we're bringing in and um getting away from those negative twenty degree days is uh makes that much easier on the buildings and the the staff operating them. Um, um, we meet ASHRAI and MDH standards for air ventilation systems. We've purchased um five hundred and seventy-four um HEPA machines, standalone HEPA machines. Um, been placing those in every classroom. We purchased um over four hundred barriers. We received over two thousand face shields from the state of Minnesota, including um on top of that um cloth masks that we distributed. We put hand sanitizer in every single classroom and we, and we put them at the main entrances when you come into the building. But we still encourage or highly encourage hand washing with soap, cause you can't beat that. We've um authorized custodial overtime for additional cleaning for both elementary and secondary buildings. And that overtime's um direction is given by the the head engineer at the building so that they can determine what needs to get cleaned and how to get cleaned beyond the regular hours um of the custodians. And then we use um a few different products. We use a disinfectant that the custodians use and are trained to use. And then we put a green product, green certified product that's hydrogen peroxide based in every classroom for as a cleaner, so that the staff can clean um surfaces regularly. So those, those are just a few of the the layers that we've talked about um that we've been working and seem to have been um working well with staff. So I don't know if you had questions or, that was my pretty short list of items we've been adding since uh, since this pandemic started.
Thank you, Eric. I just had a quick question. When do you think you'll have all the HEPA filters in for teachers?
I was uh, I I don't have a a firm delivery date for the secondary. Um I was told that they were gonna ship them on this Friday.
Okay.
And if that's the case, um if we're lucky and they don't hit a storm or anything, I'm hoping we'll get them by the the following Friday. They're being shipped directly, directly to each site. So once they arrive, it's a matter of a couple hours and they're placed in the classrooms.
Oh.
And many of them, um, there's, there are several in secondary buildings because we were placing them based on requests. So this will just fill out the building.
Thank you. Any other questions for Eric?
Okay, um, another uh piece of our presentation uh as we look at the, at the Edina Public Schools and the system is to talk about uh the mental health and how we're um, how we're gonna begin to address that and begin to learn more about that. So I'm gonna ask Jeff uh to give some background um in that. So, Mr. Jargensen?
All right. Thank you, Superintendent Schultz, Board Chair Allenberg, esteemed board members. I'm just pleased to be So just pleased to be with you tonight and be able to just comment a little bit about what we're doing and what we're planning on doing around student mental health and about our system wellness overall. I wanted to let you know that we've been prepping for this for some time, but we've also been in action during this time period as the school year has gone on. We have been following a roadmap that has been laid out by, by CASL, which is a collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning, which is a recommended program, both from the CDC and from Minnesota Department of Education as we try to, as we try to really focus our efforts on, again, student wellness and environmental wellness within our schools. So with that, we have, we've always maintained a full continuum of services for mental health, especially at our tier two and tier three levels. That tier two is when something more is needed from our students outside of the classroom. And tier three, when we need to refer on to additional services, which is our co-located mental health programs. We've been focusing a lot of our efforts on really trying to classroom a little bit more, and that's what the roadmap is designed to do, is try to work from the bottom up, which is trying to support our teachers and their support of our students, whether that was in person or whether that be virtual. So we worked to, on that, on that process, and we're continuing to refine those processes as we're going through this year and as students are returning, we're really putting a high emphasis on that again. That first step that we take a look at is really taking time to cultivate and deepen those relationships, to build partnerships and to, to plan for things like social, emotional learning, but also student wellness. But it's about relationship, we recognize that. Second is, is really focusing in on, again, you know, giving the teachers the, the tools that they need in order to be effective in their practices. Third is to create that safe, supportive, and equitable learning environment, and that's when we're more in person. I've got to tell you that there's so much you can do virtually, but when we start coming more in person, that's when we really start to focusing more on that safe and supportive and equitable learning environment. And so that's, that's a step again that we're taking by equipping teachers. Our primary people that are working on the equipping are our social workers, our psychologists, our counselors, and also our deans and assistant principals out at the sites. Now we're coming up to a point in this roadmap that we've been following, which is really the fourth step, which is to utilize data as an opportunity to share and empower and deepen relationships and continuously improve and support our model. I think we've got good things going. We've got great community relationships. We're working with the Ed Fund on a number of mental health initiatives right now. We've got the Heal Together campaign going on. The Ed Fund has been working on the Mental Health Minutes, which is really focusing in on our providers at each of the sites to just really assure students that we're here for you and that we're going to take care of you. And they're also working on development of a video that will be hopefully shared out at the schools that, that will really, again, focus on the fact that we're here for our students, that, that there are resources available to our students. And we really want to emphasize that they can help each other as well. And so there's going to be a focused event on that coming up very soon. But as I was talking about the data portion of being next in this, in this lineup, one of the things that we have really not had a really good snapshot of is, is how our students are reporting how they're feeling, their overall mental health, their wellness, how they're coping with the whole COVID crisis, whether that be in a virtual environment or whether that is now in the return. We know that we've seen some spiking anxiety in some cases where students have, have been coming into school and some parents have chosen then to hold on bringing their students back because that anxiety level was perhaps too high in their students. But we're also taking a look at other coping mechanisms and wanting to get a feel from the students firsthand on how they're coping. In the past, we've had the Minnesota Student Survey that has given us that snapshot from a very high level, but it's only at specific grade levels. And that only comes about every once every three years. So we don't really have an opportunity to, to really take a nice dipstick about where we're at right now with our students. And that data is not necessarily something that we can say, oh, now I can track that back. If a student is in crisis or they're, they're, they're expressing thoughts of suicidal ideation, we really didn't have the ability or the, or the nimble ability to, to really track down and say, who, who needs this support right now? And how can we flow those services to, to them? So we're partnering and we've contracted with an agency called Panorama. Panorama does, does surveying of our student populations from grades three all the way through grade twelve. We're excited about this opportunity because we will be surveying students on just their overall social, emotional learning competency. And what that means is how well are they able to regulate their own emotions? How well are they able to take care of themselves? And then what is their overall level of wellness? So it's, so it is asking students very directed questions, just about how are you coping? What are your coping mechanisms and, and, and how well do you, can you find resources when you need to find them? Another element of it is, is really students talking to us about the support that they feel from their school. So from the classroom or from the supports that are available to them within the school or even socially. So this tool will help us get at a firsthand opinion of the students that we serve. And it's, it can be, can be seen as a, as a mental health screener in a lot of ways, but largely is really talking about the skills that the students themselves feel they possess. And it gives us a measure of how well they're doing and applying those skills. So these are, this is information that we can utilize, obviously within the school district, to help focus our efforts on the areas that really need the most attention. It's easy for us when we're talking about mental health concerns and mental health issues to identify those students that are presenting in an overt fashion. That means an externalizing condition where they're demonstrating a lot of behavioral difficulties, whether it is crying in the classroom or whether it's defiant and oppositional behavior, we can, we can find those students, that's easy. But the largest percentage of students struggling with mental health concerns or even just wellness concerns are actually highly internalized conditions that do not manifest themselves easily. As a matter of fact, a student can go through the entire day and we would not see them impaired in any way, shape, and form. And then they go home and they absolutely collapse. Or they have a private life even from their parents where they're not sharing that with anyone in their lives and they're just keeping it to themselves. And it's, it's a worm that can turn inside them until they get to the spot where it just becomes overwhelming, and now there's a mental health crisis. The students that we want to reach are those students that, you know, are, are, are internalizing, that are, that are holding it together during the course of the day, but that are, we're really concerned about because they're not sharing that information with a lot of people. So we're hoping that this survey, again, will help identify more students that may be struggling so that we can, again, focus our efforts on the needs that are being reported by the students themselves as opposed to utilizing the national or state norms that we've been forced to utilize because we haven't had our own internal data. This will be the first step in helping us to identify how students are doing and give us the opportunity to intervene where there is crisis, but also then develop capacity in the areas that our school needs us to develop capacity the most. And so the emphasis here is, is that, you know, this, this is a, a survey that we want to be able to provide to, to all students' grades, three through twelve. It would be something that would be done in a digital fashion. It would be something that only takes about fifteen minutes to do at both the elementary and the secondary schools. Parents can opt out of this if they choose to do that with, with their, with their student. But at the same time, giving us the opportunity to measure like this will give us data that will help us in, again, our formulation of the services that we need to provide. Yes, at a tier three sense, yes, at a tier two sense, but most of all, it's going to inform teachers about what it is they need to do within their classrooms to make that classroom a warm, welcoming, safe, and inviting environment. And can help students to engage in their academic activities and to actually achieve at the level we know that our students are capable of. So just wanted to make you aware that we're at that step and it's an exciting step for us. We've been looking to, to do this for some time. We are now in that spot where we can move forward. And it is part of the pathway that is recommended as we move through this, this CASL playbook, so to speak, as, as we're moving towards a better system that can meet the, the social, emotional needs of our students and at, at the next, at another level, our staff as well.
Okay, I think I'm going to, is there, you Chair Allenberg, I'm going to ask Randy to, I know the board's red, oh, I'm sorry. Okay, that's fine, go ahead.
Jeff, this is, this is thrilling to hear. I believe, Ellen, you and I, maybe Erica, talked about this two years ago. Panorama is an outstanding surveying organization. And they have a variety of tests and social, emotional, and so this is thrilling. Have we actually contracted with them yet? Or is this a, okay, so good, the ink is dry. When are we, when are we going to be actually using it?
So we're taking a look at the survey being sent out to students the, the two weeks prior to spring break. So that, and, and the, the marvelous part about this is that as soon as those surveys are done, literally Panorama turns that data around for us next day. So there's not this long computation process because they're an established entity. They've, they've done this with a number of school districts around the area that I've gotten great recommendations from. And it gives us useful data at a very, in a very friendly teacher interface.
This is thrilling. It's on so many parents' minds right now, and the timing on this is really good. Now, can there be a test for the parents to, to talk about what their child is doing? Are the parents involved in, in this? What kind of confidentiality with the parents is there? If, and I suppose it's age sensitive too, a third grader's reaction may be a little bit different from a senior's. Can you talk about what kind of information the parents can get and if the parents can be surveyed themselves?
Yeah, so I, I mean, obviously if, if we recognize that there's a concerning report from, from the students and, and there's, there's indicators, we, we have, we have certain questions on the test that would be considered more red flags that would be media attention necessary, then, then we would obviously be in communication with families. This is data that is collected on their students, so they would have access to that data at some, at some level. And so we, we just want to make sure though that we're, we're also wanting our students to participate fully in this. And that's where we really want our parents to be engaged in this process, is to encourage their students to take the test, to be able to answer honestly. These are questions that typically just don't get asked of people. I mean, one of the most powerful questions that is asked on, on these tests, both for third graders all the way through twelfth grade, is do you have one adult within the school system that you feel comfortable going to and talking to when you feel stressed out or you just don't feel in control? That's what we aspire to do within our system, and we can very quickly assume that we're all very approachable, but that doesn't mean that the student in their mind believes that they have anyone that they can trust with this information or go to with this information. So just asking that question alone is a great test on us as a district to be able to answer the question of whether or not we are reaching the population of students that we believe we're reaching. We, we believe, again, that we're doing a good job. The test is in how students perceive. And so we want to get those perceptions so that we can do better in the work that we do.
Timing's great on this.
Ellen?
Yeah, well, Jeff, I, I really get excited when I hear you talk about this survey. But I would, I would differ from Owen saying the timing is great on this because I really would have liked to see the results of this survey before tonight's meeting. And the reason is, and, and, and even earlier than this, because it would have been very useful as a board member when we are making strategic plans to understand exactly what our students are experiencing and how they are on this very important social, emotional level in the middle of a pandemic. So yes, definitely, I am happy to hear we're doing it. But it would have been very useful for me to have that survey at this meeting as we're trying to figure out, is there greater urgency or not so greater urgency to roll, to, to get more students back into the classroom? And it's, so for me, and I'm just going to say, the, I have requested survey information before. And I have requested academic progress information before. Both, all of these things are important for us to understand and, and be able to really assess the state of our district and effectively respond with appropriate learning models. So, and I understand we're going to be getting this type of information next month. But thank you for the plan to test for this. I, I would want this to be more than just once a year in March.
No, and so I, I just, what I'll say to that is, when is the most important time to have the information? It's always two weeks ago. And that will be at any point in time, right? So again, with the moving nature of, of how we've worked this, this school year, we were looking for an opportune time to do this. And, and so this, this isn't the, obviously the best time in retrospect, we could have done it two weeks ago, yes. But we weren't ready at that point in time to roll this out, and so we focused on some of those preliminary strategies. So apologize, but this is a first step that we're taking. And as you said, is, now as we encourage this relationship with, with Panorama, we see this being a measure that we can do on an annual basis.
Great, thank, thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, I just wanted to make a quick comment, Jeff, and I, I wanted to make sure that it was mentioned too that even though this survey will help us identify more students, you and your staff, that the staff in our schools have already started identifying students that need that extra support and needed more time in front of teachers or intervention or whatever that is, and that has been going on. So I agree that with what you're saying is that more information is always good and, you know, we can always say we should have had it two weeks ago. But I want to make sure board members and community members understand that there has been a great deal of work already in place to help identify these students. And this is just an additional layer on top of it that's going to give us more information. But it has not been us kind of going in blindly all the time, so I, I just wanted to make sure. You were recognized for that work because it's been really important to a lot of families, I know.
Yeah, thank you for, for bringing that up, Jamie. We, we have, we have been doing work at, as I said, at a special education level, 504 level, at-risk level, and all of the sites have been engaged in this type of activity to get our, our most vulnerable students back as quickly as possible. And we didn't put a, a listing of, you know, characteristic signs and symptoms together saying you had to have an identified disability in order to be eligible for that early return or that, that supported learning environment. We, I, I think every site has had that, that opportunity to bring in students as, as they saw the need arise. So thank you.
Julie, and then I'll go back to Owen.
Thanks, Jeff, that was really insightful and it's a really just smart next move for how we address student needs. So I thank you for all your work and your team's work. Just really quickly, you know, we had listened to a survey, I know that it was just a grade level survey you had talked about from the state last year. And some of those learnings, key learnings from that feedback that we had gotten are part of what went into the plan for this year, COVID or not COVID, right? There were needs that were identified. Can you just talk for, just to share a little bit of insight on that and how you were able to use that data to kind of address student needs over the last year up to where we are right now?
Yeah, so, so once again, when we, we took a look at, at the, the data that came in from the, the State Department and then even our own internal test, we had, we largely asked the same questions so that we could define whether or not we were at a state average or whether we were at a Dyna average, right? And so the state average that we were seeing anywhere from forty to fifty percent of households reporting increased stress and concerns about child mental health. And then we took our survey in, in Edina and we saw the numbers actually tick up a little bit with the number of parents reporting concerns about their children's mental health. So what that did for us is obviously solidified our process in saying we needed to do something within our system to ensure that we're addressing the social, emotional, mental health needs and wellness needs of our students. And so that, that was a great impetus. It was, it was, it was that catalyst that pushed us And so that, that was a great impetus. It was, it was, uh, it was that catalyst that pushed us forward into that next step of saying we need to focus some stats, some professional development in this area. We need to organize our, our tier two providers, our psychologists and our social workers, counselors and the like. And we also enhance our relationship with our outside providers, both our chemical dependency provider and with our extended service provider in Frazier. Uh, so that was a, that was a common commitment that we made across the board. This is that we needed to be affecting change at all levels so that we could reach those students that parents were identifying that would be in need. Uh, but it also then begged the question, and this is where, how that evolution took place, is it begged the question, that parent perception is, is valid. It's, it's an amazingly valid tool because they're seeing some of those overt symptoms that, that students are showing at home. And sometimes they're seeing even those more internalizing as students withdraw, as students are more quiet and they're not talkative or they're not wanting to socialize. Those are the softer signs, but we weren't getting those things firsthand. But we had, we did start hearing, you know, anecdotally as our, as our tier two providers were reaching out to students that were maybe less engaged and so forth. We've started finding out more and more of those students were struggling with those internalizing conditions, those quiet types of concerns uh, that can lead to, to larger mental health concerns. And so that's what, again, the next catalyst there was to push us forward towards saying we really need this student survey information so that we can now, again, take that next step and actually develop a continuum of service that is unique to Edina and Edina's students. What they're expressing is what we need to serve rather than a generic form that really is trying to aim at casting a net and hoping you catch those that are, that are having concerns. The survey doesn't necessarily, isn't necessarily going to allow us to catch all students, but the survey is going to be able to allow us to catch more students in terms of, and give us an idea of what students are reporting as their greatest need. So that's the evolution.
Great. No, that's great. It's great work. It's, it's intentional. It is aligned with the strategic plan. It, I think the partnership with the Ed Fund has been just an incredible source for community members to get involved and to be part of this. So, um, part of the solution. So thank you. Thanks for all your work, Jeff. That was a, that was a helpful explanation.
Thank you.
Uh, to jump in, I guess I'm next. Uh, Ginny, I'm really glad you brought up your point because we already do have many mechanisms in place to do these sorts of tests. This is more granular and it's more topical. So, um, so very good point. And Jeff, you're going to be giving us an update in the, in a month. Is that what I'm understanding? Would you also be able to give us an update on the response mechanism? You find that there's a student who is not presenting as having any problems, but, uh, lo and behold, we find out that this student has significant emotional issues. I'd be very interested, I think most of us would, in tracing out how you're, how you'll be handling that. Um, so, and then, um, this may not be exactly in your domain, but, um, it may be more of a Randy question, but it, I would be interested if we could have a voluntary survey of parents on what they perceive to be their child's learning loss. Um, the, the students may not be very good at self-reporting on that. I can see that in my own household. And the parents have an insight. You talked about the overt, um, presentation that, that parents can pick up that the kids can't. Um, is there any discussion about something regarding the parents and putting them into the feedback mechanism here?
So the, the only example that I really have of that, uh, right now, Owen, is, is that, you know, in special education, our teams are going through that, engaging the parents and that, in that process and that dialogue about any concerns that come up with, with learning loss. Uh, that's not something we're doing broadly as, as, you know, again, there's, there's definitely been a loss of traditional learning environments, but not necessarily a learning. Our, our students have continued to learn and I think that's something that, uh, that everyone would, would continue to emphasize. Have they learned in the same way and have they learned exactly the same things? Probably not, but we, we have, we have supplemented that with some, some marvelous life experience too. So.
So maybe that's a point for a, a different discussion, but I'm hearing reports of, you know, kids are feeling like dunces and, uh, they feel like they're the deviant and they're the imposter. And, uh, they're not picking things up very well and it's more now with, with the current situation. So.
That, that will be picked up a bit in the survey, uh, as well as some of the questions that we're serving about how they feel about themselves at this point in time.
Okay, okay. Great. Thank you.
Ellen, did you have another question?
Yeah, just a quick one. Um, and this is to clarify for people that were reading the, um, the background material for today. And it mentions tier one and tier two students coming back on March 8th. And, um, and I'm just wondering, um, if you could, in our discussion here, you were using different tiers. And I'm just wondering if you could, um, define what is, what is being talked about in this proposal that's out online, the tier one, tier two. And then there's an, there's also some, some, something called a GO.
Yeah. So, so what I can, what I can tell you is that doesn't really bear a lot of resemblance to the tiers that I was, I was referring to. And so that will be, I think, discussed more in the plan, uh, that will, that will come up here in just a little bit. So I will defer, uh, to that. The tiers that I was talking about is our tier level of service, not our tiered level of return. Um, and so the, the tier level of service is saying we, you know, that all of our students are entitled to tier one, which is access to our general education classroom and the environment that they're in. Tier two is available to another section of students, another slice of students. So they would get both tier one and tier two as those students need a little bit more support or additional supports from the outside of the classroom. And tier three students are those students that need more individualized support. Again, they have access to everything along that continuum, but the tiers just represent levels of service available to specific students.
And they don't, and, and, and so the 200 students mentioned in here are not, are not the same students that you're talking about.
So we, we have some, so the, some of the tiered students that came back early. So we, we did bring in our tier three students, uh, initially right away. Uh, a lot of our tier two students also came in within the system. And now the, the large return is really talking more about, uh, the rest of our students coming back in. Those that would require largely just the general education, uh, access. So, uh, and, and that's largely in-person services. They've been receiving tier one services in a virtual environment. They would now be receiving tier one services in the in-person environment. I think we're mixing, I think we're mixing two things up here.
I think, I think we are. And if we're going to get to this later, I'll, I'll let them explain, um, who they, they're proposing to, to roll back in what phase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay.
Question?
Oh, Owen, question?
Or is your? All right, thanks.
So I'm going to turn it over to, uh, Randy, um, for, for his comments. Randy, I think, uh, the board's read the report and it's out there so we can, um, give a, a, um, you know, a brief presentation. And then, um, uh, so we get time for the board to ask questions of our, our students and our teachers. So, but I know you had some things because I know we're in the midst of this planning and still planning for it. So Randy, take it from there.
Thank you, uh, Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Schultz, our board members, community members, staff and students who are here this evening. We so appreciate your time and having an opportunity to discuss this a little further. Uh, in a few minutes, I'll turn it over to Andy, Sean and Tim, our secondary principals, who have some teachers and some students who've come back to us. Effective on what a typical week looks like for them, both in the hybrid and as we're anticipating this return for more in-person time. Of course, you know, the report has a rationale and their current case rate data, mitigation strategies. Um, we will be, we are planning to ask, you know, to kind of follow up on some of the questions that were just asked of Jeff. We are planning to ask stakeholders, um, to provide some feedback through our winter check-in survey, which was similar to what we did in the fall. And that would include staff and families and students. Um, and it's a variety of questions, but one of those is around academic progress to, to your point, Ellen. Uh, we, we know in the report, we had some changes in social distancing guidelines from MDH. Uh, the learning plan is, uh, the proposal from administration and we have these four important dates. February 16th, of course, our students have just come back into the hybrid model about a week ago. And then the eighth, the GO students, um, are sometimes referred to as our growth and opportunity students. It's more of an internal term, but what we have basically done is tried to prioritize some of the academic needs that students have. We're facing some more in-person time, uh, for those prioritized students. And, uh, both Andy and, and Tim and Sean will be able to speak to that. Uh, March 15th, of course, phasing in grades six, nine, 22nd, phasing in grade seven, eight, 10 and 11. So what's the rationale for the phase? Well, we, we still have some remaining challenges and tasks to do and to complete. We know that vaccination, um, for staff is not complete and in some cases it's, uh, not even started. Uh, we know that we still have some busing challenges that we're trying to work through with our high school students. We have about five buses as of last Friday that are over our legal capacity. And so we're trying to resolve that, working with David White. Uh, we, we of course have the, uh, installation of the HEPA filters to complete, scheduling, organizing of lunches, balancing some classrooms and adapting student schedules to make sure that we're able to balance students out at a minimum of, of the three feet of, uh, social distancing. We know that we had some high school and, um, secondary custodial staff that have been supporting the elementary model and we'll have to move them back to secondary. And so we'll have to rework some of the cleaning schedules a bit. Um, as many have mentioned, we are unaware of the impact of the variants because we can't foresee the future on this. But that's just something for us to continue to monitor and consider. And so what we really put together in this phase and approach is a ramp up to do this in a way that doesn't overwhelm our system, doesn't overwhelm our health professionals, doesn't overwhelm our ability to continue to deliver the services day in and day out. Um, we'll ask in a few minutes for our teachers and our, to the structure of that week. We do have, uh, a proposal to continue this at-home learning day. We would argue that we have been doing school all year. Uh, sometimes we do it at school, sometimes we do it at home, just the location varies. But learning has been the constant and our goal for learning is the constant. Uh, some of the rationale for that home, at-home learning day is just the, the necessary preparation time that we've asked our teachers to do to prepare to teach in a multi-mode delivery model. They're teaching kids in front of them and kids who are online at the same time. And they're continuing to do that for the first time as they continue to work through this one year of, um, curriculum experience doing it this way. We asked a lot of, um, our staff to increase the percent of time. Um, we're asking, I'm sorry, we're asking a lot of our staff in terms of the, uh, percent of time for in-person services. And this is, this is a big load. This is a big lift. Um, we are asking our staff to provide, you know, valuable intervention and support time. Um, during that time on those Wednesdays, that's something that occurs. We also ask teachers to collaborate across the district because we know when we pull all of our brains together, we're going to be better for kids than if we're working in silos or working independently. So that's a cultural element that we're continuing to grow. Uh, we do feel this is pretty consistent with the districts that we've checked in with and how they're handling and how they're problem solving this. And what, this is just one really simple measure, but one of the things I looked at, uh, with our team and the enrollment office is just looking at, you know, how, how productive are students on these days? And that's a hard thing to measure. But what we did is we looked at Schoology as an example and we looked at their Schoology interactions. And we looked at, you know, what does that look like when students are in Schoology and they are, they are creating content, that they're creating work? So what I'm going to show you is just a quick graphic of what that looks like across the week. And please give me an audible okay that you're able to see that because I can't see you now.
Okay.
Okay. So what we did is we looked at data from September all the way through January. And we looked at Schoology interactions. So this is about when kids are creating content in Schoology and when they're creating that content. And there's really four different time zones of when they would be creating content. So work being done before school is 5:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Work being done during school is 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Work being done after school in the upper right is 4:00 to 10:00 PM. And then work being done late night is to 5:00 AM. Yes, we do have students that are working anywhere from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM, which gets to some of our social, emotional, um, elements. So if we look at work being done before school, the question is how do the different days of the week compare in when kids are creating content in Schoology? And this dark blue is Monday. But when we look at the rest of the days, they're pretty evenly distributed in terms of students working before school. And certainly our Wednesday looks like the other days and before school work. If we look at during school, again, Monday is the heavy hitter. This one is, uh, Tuesday and Wednesday and Thursday. And so we see that there is a comparable pattern during school days, whether it is Tuesday or Wednesday or Thursday, um, across those days for the amount of content students are producing and generating in Schoology. When we look at work being done after school, again, Wednesdays look very similar to these other days. This light, light yellow is Saturday. So of course we hope that, you know, things dip down on Saturday. And then when you look at work being done late night and we see again, these, these days look very similar. So one small metric, but one way of looking at this from a, from a productivity standpoint is to look at these systems and look at what kids are doing and look at where their interaction and how that compares and how those days look. Now certainly if that interaction was very, very small and very, very low on Wednesday, that would be more concerning. We would dig deeper into that. But what we're seeing is that Wednesdays look very similar to the other days. Again, that's only one metric, one piece of data, not something in the report, something that we just pulled together today. But I thought it was worthwhile to share with you this evening as part of the conversation. Terms of some future data to share, we do want to get into the academic progress conversation in March with the board. We'll be also talking about summer plans, also some feedback and data from our stakeholders about the plans for Eva and particular elementary moving forward. And then as Jeff mentioned, the board, um, getting an opportunity to look at that SEL data from the Panorama survey. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our principals to maybe introduce our teachers and the students. And could you speak a little bit to the structure of the, the experience of the week? Uh, what that looks like for you and what that feels like for you, uh, as you're preparing for in-person learning as well? And, um, how you've leveraged or used Wednesdays and other days in terms of collaboration, et cetera? So maybe we can first turn it over to, uh, Southview and Tim Anderson, and then we'll go to Valley View and then to the high school. So, Tim?
Well, thanks, Dr. Smazl, Chair Allenberg, Board Members, Superintendent Schultz, Community Members and Special guests. I want to open with a special thanks to our teacher leaders and student leaders who are investing in our own capacity building tonight. Um, as we consider what might be best and what are the best ways to proceed by sharing their voice. So I'd like to welcome Southview students, Maisy and Elizabeth to unmute and join us. And I'd ask that they'd introduce themselves and, uh, share their grade level and then share a little bit about what, uh, their week is like and how they've been using their time, uh, as learners in a pandemic.
Hi, I'm Maisy and I'm in eighth grade. Um, a little bit about my week, I'm a hybrid student. So I am in the building on Thursdays and Fridays. Um, I know a big topic is what to do with Wednesdays and how we're going to use those moving forward. Um, looking at the Schoology charts and also from my own personal experience, I find them really beneficial to help me get missing work done because during this time, it's a lot harder to be productive, especially when I'm at home. And I find that that extra day is extremely helpful. And, um, yeah.
Maisy, thanks. And, um, as you think about the return to potentially four days a week, how do you, um, kind of envision how, what will change for you? What will stay the same for you as a learner?
Um, I'm really looking forward to going back to four days a week. Um, I think it'll help me stay focused more during the school day. And, um, I think most changes will be positive for me personally. Um, however, I can't really speak, um, to this personally, but I know a lot of EVA students, um, like Elizabeth, have concerns about, um, feeling included in the classroom. Um, and I know a lot of teachers are stressed about balancing those two groups when they're in school, but yeah.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much. Uh, Elizabeth, could you share a little bit about what your, your experience as a, as an EVA and, uh, potentially in-person learner? as an EVA and uh potentially in-person learner uh have been? And then what you see as potential in um, in the uh decisions the board has to make up?
Um, yeah. So hi, my name is Elizabeth Teskey. Uh, I am a seventh grader at SVMS. And uh I have been EVA since September of this year. So I have not gone to school since March. Um, and I personally, I think Wednesdays are a really beneficial change to our year. When I was in sixth grade, I sort of laughed a bit when we heard we had Fridays off because I did not understand why. Uh, but now on Wednesdays, I completely understand it. On B days, Tuesdays and Fridays, I have enriched science. I have enriched social studies and enriched LA. So I have a whole bunch of homework every night. But I also do all my activities. And when I'm in school, I have a lot more focus because I'm in person and I have all this time to do things. But at home, Wednesdays give me that time that I miss. Um, but something that aren't so great is we have changed this schedule a lot. At the beginning of the year, EVA kids just went to uh advisory in the morning and then that was it. Two weeks in, we had Google meets uh that were about 10 minutes to an hour long. And from a student perspective, we got almost nothing done. Um, then the schedule changed again. We went to two flexes every, uh, sorry, two flexes every day, which was very, very helpful for me. I got to see multiple teachers and I got just the opportunity to get the help that I needed. And then we changed again. And now EVA kids don't even have flex anymore. And I'm a kid that tries to be organized. And I had to delete my schedule multiple times due to these changes. Um, on the topic of changing to full-time, I think that it's great that we're taking these steps. But I think that the hardest challenge of this year, from my perspective, has been the hybrid versus EVA struggle. So apart from being on a computer too many hours a day, I have some classes, especially at the beginning of the year, where we were this computer in a corner. We weren't really talked to by the teacher. We were just sort of there. And it makes sense. Why wouldn't you want to talk to the people in person in the room? But I think that with all the hybrid kids being giddy to go to school again, the EVA kids are still stuck in the corner. We're forced to choose between being social with people and being safe, which is not a fun choice to make when you're an EVA kid. So just to wrap things up, um, first of all, the Wednesday structure is super helpful. It's great. But we don't need it when we go back in person because we have the time and the flexes in school to get things done. Um, secondly, kids need consistency in their life. All the change is really, really hard for me. And I know that as a kid, I can't change the COVID-19 protocol. But we have people on this Google meet who can just give a little bit of consistency to students. And then finally, when considering full-time schooling in late March, the EVA kids need to be in the factor, sorry, need to be a factor in the decision just as much as the hybrid kids. Please don't leave their voices unheard. Uh, thank you very much, Schoolbird, for your service and also for the opportunity to share my voice.
Thanks so much, uh Maisy and Elizabeth. And I'd like to invite the leaders from Southview, Mart Oberle and Sarah Mijorko, to introduce themselves and share a little bit about their week and how they uh envision tackling the, the tasks before us. So, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Yes, um, my name is Mart Oberle and I'm here with my colleague Sarah. And we are both seventh grade math teachers. And we appreciate the opportunity to share this evening. While this year has been a lot, Edina teachers still care about all learners and are working very hard right now to serve them. Wednesdays afford me the time I need to be the type of teacher I want to be and the type of teacher all learners deserve. This time is critical for three main reasons: teacher collaboration, student support, and the success of, for Eva learners. First, teachers are using this time to collaborate and design. We are working to balance two cohorts of learners, design or alter curriculum for both cohorts, and handle all of the logistics that come with that, such as transferring traditional hands-on manipulatives into a digital model for our at-home learners. Ninety-three percent of Southview teachers say they use this time to collaborate as a PLC and grade-level team, responding to student needs and designing interventions and extensions. Ninety-two percent teachers say that they would not be able to sustain their current workload without Wednesday time. And either they would need to put in even more time outside of the school day or some of their work would, would need to be not completed. Keeping Wednesdays asynchronous ensures quality instruction and learning. Here are some quotes from Southview teachers. My lessons would diminish in quality, so I would have to spend more in-class time reviewing if we took away Wednesdays. Wednesdays give me more time to help students as well, which keeps them caught up and gives them a chance to review. The quality and pace of synchronous lessons will decline if the current Wednesday schedule does not remain. Not all lessons or parts of lessons need to be synchronous. Careful planning for Wednesdays does not mean a reduction of learning time. Having more content or synchronous time will not equate to higher quality learning as long as teachers are teaching to multiple modes of learners. I've also worked this year on our advisory task force in planning for school-wide implementation of advisory time that gives students voice, value, and connection. This work was highlighted during our recent meeting, or your recent meeting. I know others have areas of focus as well, LT work, new district-wide science standards and implementation, among others, that they are working on during this time, work that makes our school great.
And I'm Sarah Mijorko at Southview.
Well, Sarah, you got muted.
I wanted to pop in with the student support. What I wanted to share was Wednesdays also offer time to support students while maintaining a learning day for all learners. I'm able to target particular needs. Students seek support, enrichment, or connection through Wednesday flex times, a time that's absolutely essential because more students than ever are needing support in these learning models. Learners complete assessments and reassessments. They seek and respond to feedback. This is one of our pathways, one thing that we're proud of at Southview and a way that students are able to choose a pathway that works for them. Each advisor has been able to check in with each learner weekly during extended academic check-ins to help students plan and organize their classes and work. And students are able to respect family time outside of the school day, since the extra time is built into Wednesday. This is to learn, practice, participate in sports, and have family time and really keeping that protected as well as any appointments that they might need to go to, right? I know a number of students with braces. Uh, this also creates an experience for all learners, not just Eva learners. So struggling learners and families do not miss synchronous instruction and get even further behind as student support services, counselors, and social workers are setting up meetings at times when students and teachers aren't missing class.
Excellent. Thank you, uh, Dr. Smazl.
And finally, I believe Wednesdays create a structure to ensure the support necessary to give Eva students an equitable education. Wednesdays will be even more crucial than they already are because with managing a full in-person classroom, Eva students will have less opportunity for one-on-one support during class. I envision using Wednesdays to connect with Eva students and support them to increase their mastery level of content. We want to close by sharing this message from one of our colleagues. Wednesdays have been extremely beneficial to making a better academic and social experience for my students. I was initially very hesitant at the idea of losing a day of instruction. What I have found through though is that I have been able to make larger gains in social emotional connections and access because of Wednesdays. By having more time to get to know all of my learners, I have been better at, I have been better at meeting them where they are at and pushing them more to grow as learners. Thank you for hearing our, our perspective.
Thank you, Team Southview. So appreciate your uh um participation tonight. How about we turn it over to Sean Dudley and the team at Valley View? You're muted, Sean.
There, how about that? Uh, Chair Allenberg, School Board Members, Superintendent Schultz, Dr. Smazl, uh, Valley View staff, students, uh, all staff and students and community members. Thank you for the opportunity to share this evening. We have um five people from uh Valley View here to share this evening. And we will start with our students who have been super patient and hanging in there. We checked in a little bit ago. And so I'd like to introduce Nola and Helly. They are from Mr. Malik's Advisory. And this advisory is a student leadership team advisory, um, our equity team advisory. And so I would invite them to share their experiences. And um, I will just say, uh, Nola, why don't you start? Thank you.
Okay. Hi, everybody. Um, I'm Nola. I am a hybrid student, A3K, and um, I'm in eighth grade. I'm really happy to be sharing my um opinion and view on this because it means a lot to be speaking for um a lot of value. So thank you for the opportunity. Um, so my daily sort of, um, when I'm in school, I do feel that I am more connected to um the teachers and uh friends. It is kind of hard though still to socialize with them because we are six feet away. And so sometimes it feels a little awkward, you know, kind of talking six feet apart from each other. So sometimes, most of the time actually, we um, there's, it's very quiet because people are too nervous to talk. So if that's maybe the lack of why we're not seeing a lot of um socializing, it's probably because of that distance. Also, um, when I am not in school and I am online, uh, I, one of the benefits is um the schedule that I have in being able to, once I am done with that meet, I can get my work done. Um, I really have to give credit to um Ms. Anderson, my science teacher. She has done a really great job managing um like the labs and everything that she has done for the class. And I just, she is one of my favorite teachers and she's handled um hybrid and EVA really well. Um, I'm not going to keep talking for too long because I know Helly um really wants to talk. But for Wednesdays, I do feel that they are necessary. I've talked to teachers and they've actually told me that that's how they reach out to EVA students. Um, I like them because when I am in hybrid or I'm in EVA, I feel calmer knowing that I have Wednesday to get all that work done. And I know that kids that do sports, especially um dance kids, um, I have got friends that do dance and they have extremely long practices. So for them to be in school and then right after that go to a sport, it can be a lot. So Wednesdays are really beneficial.
Thanks, Nola. Hi, Helly. Do you have something to add? I know you do.
Hi, um, I'm Ahelly. I am in seventh grade and I am currently doing the learning model hybrid. Um, so on A days and B days, um, I, sorry, I go to school um in person on Monday and Tuesday. And I, obviously the asynchronous Wednesday and then Thursday, Friday, I am online. Um, so on A days and B days, um, I mostly on, obviously Monday and Tuesday, I get work done in school. Um, but I don't really have time after school to do my homework for that day because I'm really tired after walking around the school and just doing a bunch of work. Um, it's really, sometimes it gets stressful because there's a lot of work to do. Um, and as a kid, I have other things to do too. I have activities, I have clubs. I have um family, friends, and I want to get to those too. And when I get home from school, having to do homework right away is really overwhelming because I feel like it's just another thing to do. Um, so when we get to Wednesdays, it's really nice to just take an, like a good solid break and have the whole day to do homework um and just take a mental break. Um, most of my tests are on Thursdays and Fridays, so that Wednesday is really nice to study for the tests because um if, if the Wednesday was an actual, like a school day, which where we had, would have to uh join meets and stuff, we wouldn't really have, or I wouldn't feel that I have a good solid time to study and understand what I'm going to be, being tested on. Um, and studying really does help me succeed in tests. I mean, kind of self-explanatory. Um, but I really, I really appreciate the Wednesdays because it's really nice mentally and just, it's like a supporting day for um me. And I know a lot of other classmates um who really enjoy the Wednesdays because it's just nice to take a break and focus on um our home life. Obviously, like I said, homework, studying, and just ourselves for once. Um, again, something like, in addition to what Nola said, um, a lot of, not me, but I know a bunch of friends who have theater after school, who have sports, um, dance, a lot of other activities that take a long time, which take away time for them to do homework. And that affects them because then they won't obviously be able to do their homework, which is not really good because sorry, I mean, that's just it. They, they want to be able to do their homework, but they just can't because they don't have time. Um, and that Wednesday really does give that, them that solid day to actually finish up their homework. And I know because I've had a lot of homework one day and that Wednesday, after I was done, I felt so relieved. I was so relieved, like it, it felt so good. So um in, from my point of view and from a bunch of other students and teachers in my school, um, I really do appreciate the Wednesdays and I think we should continue with the Wednesdays. Thank you so much for letting me talk.
Thanks to Helly. That was great. Um, and thanks, Nola. That was great too. Um, we have three teachers with us. All three of these teachers are content leads in the building. We have, I'm, I'll ask them just to wave and then when I'm done introducing, they can just dive in. So we have Tim Ronhavdi. Tim is our science content lead. We have Margaret Smith and Margaret is our language arts content lead, language arts and reading. And we have Jennifer Hurt, who is our math content lead. And um, so Tim is also a, a Valley View parent of an Eva student, so I'm just going to give him that little plug there. So we'll let them talk about their um, their experience, their week, and um, what Wednesdays are like for them as well. Thanks.
Hey, thanks, Sean. Um, and hey, students, way to go. That, I can't imagine doing what you just did in front of a screen full of adults like that at your age. My gosh, I would have been running for the, for the hills. So it's tough following you, but nice work. Um, I'm Tim Ronhavdi. I have, I teach um sixth grade science and I have, we, we have a fifth grade daughter at Creek Valley who does hybrid. And we have a seventh grade son at Valley View who does EVA. So I have, um, we're involved with everything. If you want to email me any questions about perspective, I'm totally happy to share. Uh, and I just, the thing for me this year, I, I taught for 24 years and uh I, just a single, like a lesson. So how I design and plan and execute a lesson, it, um, I'm a perfectionist. I uh, I want all the details as they need to be. And so setting up these lessons, it's like, And so setting up these lessons, it's like, I plan a lesson for me. I'm experienced. I also plan the lesson as though a substitute teacher who's never subbed before or ever taught is going to teach my lesson so that anyone from any place can access it, find what they need and learn some content and have fun, all of that. That's, that's how I approach a lesson and I love it. I'm not complaining at all. It's great. That it's, this has brought a whole new skill set out of me, this experience and, and that's awesome. And it takes, it takes hours and that is the truth. It takes me so long to plan a lesson and to make it good the way I want it done, to have kids say, hey, thank you. It was, I found everything. It was organized. I liked it. I learned something. And so for me, the bit that, that's the, the extra time on Wednesdays is, is huge. It is my catch-up time. It is my connect with kids time. I connect with parents on Wednesdays. I have phone calls with parents. I have Google meets with parents. I harass kids for missing work. I congratulate kids for awesome work. And it's, it's awesome. Like they, though, like that stuff Randy was showing us, I can just see the kids on their Schoology account, looking at their science notebook. And even, it's a great chance for me to say, hey, this is awesome. Way to go. And I, I don't do that in person like I should. I found that easier to do in a kid's notebook virtually. And to have a kid say thanks with five exclamation points and that's awesome. Or to say like, you know, somebody who's not getting all their work in, if, if I can't connect with them via Schoology or a meet or something, I call their parents and their parents have been amazing. And I can, I do that on Wednesdays. And it's, it's, so I find creative ways to use that time and we run, I'm on an equity committee. We meet on Wednesdays. I'm on a grading committee. We meet on Wednesdays. I text, so you know, while this is going on, I text my, my partner teacher. Our phones are blowing up with texts about what's going on with lessons and what we're going to do. And, and so that's kind of, it's, it's, it's my day to talk to parents, kids and my peers. And well, and amplify people who are piloting for science. So I'm in touch with their rep. All this stuff is happening. And if I can get one lesson planned and do all that, it's a, it's a huge, huge win for everybody. So I'll, I'll pause there. I could, I got too much I could say.
Thanks, Tim. Margaret or Jen?
All right. Hi, I'm Margaret Smith. I teach eighth grade language arts at Valley View. And when Sean asked me if I could speak tonight, I started by thinking about what Wednesdays mean for my students. And so my students value the time they have on Wednesdays. And when they started hearing about the schedule changes, they were concerned and they started asking if they would be losing this day because it helps them manage the responsibilities of being a successful student in a rigorous district. Students use the time on Wednesday to complete coursework, connect with teachers for additional help and extend their learning. In addition to the previous items, Wednesdays also provide additional time for Eva students to connect with teachers. And that is really important because we're in, middle school teachers are tasked with multimodal teaching. And before the pandemic began, I know the high rate of stress secondary students were feeling, they were staying up too late, doing homework, stressing about assignments and didn't have a lot of downtime to take care of themselves. This is not because they didn't want to take care of themselves. It's because the system around them forced them to choose between sleep and assignment completion. When the anxiety of COVID-19 has been added into this, middle school teachers are seeing students unable to cope with the constant unknowns of the pandemic. Wednesdays are one way to protect students' mental health. In addition, teachers and my colleagues also value Wednesdays. The combination of Eva and hybrid students in one classroom has caused most teachers to rewrite every lesson, assignment, test and project to make things work for a multimodal classroom. Teachers are constantly prepping new lessons, figuring out new technology and looking for ways to make this year better for students. Some of this work occurs during our prep time. A lot of it happens on nights and weekends. Wednesdays allow teachers additional planning time for the challenges of multimodal teaching. It also allows us time to work with smaller groups of students, design creative lessons, collaborate with other staff members, make screencasts, attend IEPs and, IEP and 504 meetings and all of the other things that we need to accomplish during the week. And so I just hope that you hear from all of these others, the students and other teachers who spoke, that we value Wednesdays for a variety of reasons and see them as an essential part of this school year. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Margaret. Hi, Jen.
Hello. Well, I just heard so many great things from all of our colleagues here. So I am Jennifer Hurt. I teach math at Valley View and I'm sixth grade math. And I just celebrated my 25th year in Edina Public Schools. I'm on to year number 26 and never in my 25 years of teaching here, would I have ever guessed I would be teaching in a pandemic. So woo, adds an extra layer of excitement. We currently have those three different learning models and, you know, when I think back to 25 years ago, we had the same interest in mind. We want what's best for our students. And so thinking in that perspective, in that mindset, whatever it takes for us to deliver, deliver, whether that is online for our students or it's in person or it's asynchronously, we are using as much time as we possibly can. We're using before school, we're using evenings and we are using our weekends to plan. And we are kind of exhausting ourselves. So from a math teacher point of view, what I thought I would do is kind of run through two different scenarios. We have our regular school days, so our Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and then also our Wednesdays, which are asynchronous days at Valley View and Southview, and I believe at the high school. On regular days, we are now providing in-class and in-person instruction as well as EVA. So we're teaching online as well as in-person. And it has definitely been a challenge, not just for teachers, but for students as well. So providing support to both students in person as well as online, we're using some synchronous time to try to connect both of those learners. We are using a lot of coaching sessions, really trying to coach kids up while we have them sitting in front of us during our blocked time. We're offering still some personalized learning choices. We like to give those kids voice and choice, but that takes a lot of planning. We offer lots of in-class activities, both synchronously and asynchronously. And we at Valley View have, for math, taken on a thing called a learning log. So the kids are tracking all of their learning and all of their work. And I currently have 132 learning logs that I give feedback on every other day. So over the course of two days, I look at 132 different learning logs and work and I give feedback on those. I know many teachers have much more than that even. In addition to our regular school days, we extend our office hours. We are extending office hours before school and some teachers are offering office hours after school. We're conferencing with parents, both on the phone and Google meets. And we are trying to be as available as possible for students outside of our school hours. So I know that many teachers are checking their email well into the wee hours at night. I checked my email. I told my students I'm getting kind of old, so eight o'clock is kind of my bedtime. And I shut down a little bit more and I try to relax a little. But I know that teachers are well above and beyond eight o'clock at night, still checking emails at night on weekends because we know that that's when students are not only doing homework, but that's when they get stuck and they need us. So we want to be there for students because ultimately we want to help kids whenever we can. On Wednesdays, my Wednesdays sometimes are busier than my regular days. There are times when we are using all of our time to extend out office hours for our hybrid and, and our EVA students. It's a time to connect with them. Not only do we have a small time of advisory time to connect with them, it also allows us some targeted intervention time for students who are struggling or students that perhaps don't receive those additional services like our Math Plus or maybe they have IEP services. We offer retakes and we offer makeup tests, of which that time used to come out of school time. Kids don't have to use that school time anymore. They're using that Wednesday to do those retakes without those makeup tests. I'm updating Schoology for students. We're conferencing with students and parents. We're meeting with our PLC and our jobalikes to plan and create things like screencasts and practice activities, giving kids more voice and choice. And of course, our Pearson, which is our new adopted curriculum. Typically, teachers are working a 10 to 12 hour day or even more. In addition to weekends, if we lose our Wednesday time, I think it's safe to say that it's not a guarantee that we can continue with the same level of online and instruction, or in-person instruction for our students. We really want to. This is what we're here for. We're here for our students. And we know that our common goal is what's best for our students. Students unanimously love these asynchronous Wednesdays. They're productive. They catch up. They work ahead. They attend enrichment sessions that we offer. And they are able to meet teachers for extra help. So there it is. Thank you so much for listening. We truly appreciate all of your eyes and ears on us today.
Thanks, Jen, Tim and Margaret for this. That's awesome. Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Ahelle and Nola. Dr. Smazel?
Thank you, Valley View team. So awesome to have your voices in the space. And with that, we'll turn it over to the high school and Andy Beaton.
Evening, everyone. Chair Allenberg, Superintendent Schultz, members of the board, community. Thanks for being here and listening. Just one thing as I listen here tonight to clarify, when you think about Wednesdays, I just want to put out there, it is, it is not a completely asynchronous day. So it is synchronous for many of our students and asynchronous for some, and it depends on the day. So I think it's helpful to clarify how often our teachers are interfacing with kids on Wednesday all day. You know, combination of, of time meeting with students and time meeting with their colleagues. But with that, I want to do some introductions. I have some student leaders here and some teacher leaders that are here. I have Connor Kilalea. He is a junior hybrid student. And I have Malika Srinivas. She's a senior and she is an Eva student. You want to give away Malika's? We can see you. And then I have Carrie Dishar. She is an English teacher and the area lead of the English department. And I have Kim Castor, who is a French teacher and the area leader of world language. So I guess let's just start and hear from students again, kind of in the same format about how things are going. Your thoughts about the, the ramp up of more students back to school and other topics like Flex Wednesday and so on. Let's start with Connor. He's a hybrid student. So let's go.
Hi, everybody. My name is Connor. As Mr. Beaton said, I'm a junior at Edina High School. And I think all of the students and teachers before me have really nailed home the point and I, I would rather not bore you. So instead, I'll just provide some anecdotal evidence of what this Wednesday will serve for me this week. Looking ahead to my homework tonight, I, well, tomorrow I have an AP US history test, an enriched biology test, a meeting with Mr. Beaton in Student Senate and an interview. So I essentially have five hours to prep for all of those if I'm going to get roughly eight hours of sleep, which if I'm honest, is optimistic. So if, if we look at what Wednesday really provides for me, it's an opportunity to catch up on all those things. I mean, obviously I can't be catching up on my studying an hour before I take the test, but it gives me the opportunity and flexibility to rearrange this, my schedule, the way it fits for me. Because the way it's structured isn't, isn't always perfect and I understand it's utilitarian. It's meant, meant to benefit the most people and it usually does. But this Wednesday really offers me the opportunity to make my schedule how I want it to be and gives me really the opportunity to make the best out of it. So I would, I would stick with what almost everybody else has said, that Wednesdays are vital and taking them out would, would be a mistake for both students and teachers. Addressing coming back to school altogether, I'm a little bit uneasy about that. As a hybrid student, I'm, I'm in the school two days a week, which has been nice. I'll be honest. It's been nice to have that interaction. And I have noticed that has helped with my mood and mental health overall, which has been a big topic of this meeting. But my biggest concern here is safety. When, when I think of some of my larger classes, I have yearbook in the morning and that's roughly 27 students just in hybrid A. And we have managed space with the cafeteria. But I, I can't really imagine feeling safe in a classroom with 20 plus students in three feet of distance. And I really think the whole, the whole distance is so, feels so arbitrary that we can suddenly say that six feet is no longer necessary, even though that's what we've been preaching this entire time. So beyond that, I just, I just feel for the safety of my teachers and I know Mrs. Castor and Mrs. Dishar can probably address this more than I can as a student. But overall, I'm kind of uneasy about bringing everyone back. I'd like to just thank everybody for bringing us in. The more you value student and teacher voices, I think the better off we are as a community. So thank you all.
Thanks, Connor. Really appreciate it. Malika, your thoughts?
Hello, everybody. I'm Malika Srinivas and I'm a senior. So last semester, first semester, I was a hybrid student, but then I switched to EVA this semester. So regarding the Wednesdays, especially just in high school, a lot of students who pick EVA are generally more motivated and self-motivated to do their own work. So having those Wednesdays is really nice because although, you know, you might not have to turn something in as an attendance-based assignment, those students have the time to check in with teachers as well as get their work done on their own time, which is a freedom that, you know, people in high school get once they get there. You know, you have work, but then you also know what you need to get done. So that Wednesday really helps. Just echoing what everyone said about Wednesday. It's a really, really good thing to keep. And then something that I'm actually feel really, really strongly about is the addition to more students into the building. Kind of going off Connor sentiments, I'm a little more than uneasy. I am very against it. Considering we had Mr. Nicholas Kelly here earlier, who was clearly very, very well read up on these things. He mentioned how teachers are going to be completely vaccinated by mid-April. And right now, teachers are kind of going through lotteries based on like, oh, like who's going to get the vaccine? And I think under state of terms where that's the way teachers are getting vaccinated, I don't know if we should be opening up school. And especially as a senior, I've gone through middle school and pretty much all of high school with the same academic rigor as like a normal pre-pandemic life. And then senior year was kind of supposed to be the more ceremonial term. You know, we'd have pep fest, we'd have prom, we'd have graduation. And those things are incredibly important to me. And I think in addition to safety, I think that's something we should prioritize. And like the epidemiologist said, we should take it slow and steady rather than push it. And I think it's either, you know, short-term relief and mental health benefits or more of a long-term solution in the end, if we just take it more steadily and we can have, you know, possibility of a graduation and then next year being a time where we don't have to worry about coming back to online. We can just have it be a more constant way of life. So in terms of coming back to school, I really think we should listen to the signs and, you know, take it slow. And then, yeah, just that's it. Thank you so much for listening to The Voice. I'm really glad that students could be here to provide their input.
Appreciate it, Malika. Thank you. Kim, do you want to share a few thoughts from your world as a world language teacher?
Hi, everybody. Yes, I'm happy to do that. I'm excited to be here. I am a French teacher. I teach both French immersion students and students that picked up French in sixth grade. And there's been a lot of conversation in the world language department. So a couple of things I would want you to know is that we, as an elective, are often on multiple teams. So I'll give you kind of some student perspective and some, obviously, teacher perspective. But the collaborative teaming experience is happening for many of us in two or three different classes because of that's how, that's how we teach. The other thing is that the Chinese teacher, the Latin teacher, the ASL teacher have each four or five different preps that they have to have ready on Schoology and that the, the tedium of all of the clicking of Schoology really slows down the process. The second thing that I think is universal for both students and teachers is that we, because we're so driven by the Minnesota bilingual seal and we need to have proficient students in speaking and we need to have proficient students in speaking and listening, reading and writing, we've done average three to four Google meets a week during distance learning and also during hybrid. So in some ways, a Wednesday is a break for kids from having to be in our class from period A, from 11 o'clock to 11:45, and they can kind of catch up and do what they would like to, either making a recording or doing a reading or something. And I think that's really important also from a teacher perspective. Because actually, a science colleague commented to me today that because we're doing so many meets, and that's important because we want to keep the Eva kids and the hybrid kids at the same spot, it doesn't allow us a sneak. And what I mean by that is I teach a French cinema class and in the good old days, the kids in the room would be watching the movie and I could be grading something in paper or at my computer while they're watching and still be able to stop the movie and have discussion in between. And because we are so focused on what's happening during the day, we can't answer emails from kids that do come in because they're doing asynchronous work. We can't get to other things. And so Wednesday is also an opportunity for us to catch up on some of those things, including giving feedback in a, in a more timely manner. The other thing I think that I would like to reiterate is the intervention plan that the high school put together is one of, is probably better than what we've had for collaborative other days. We have a dedicated hour. Mine is from 12:30 to 1:30 where all world language kids could be invited during that hour. And so they're mine. I don't have to fight with an English teacher, no offense, Carrie, or the math teacher. I don't have to get the first invitation to them. And so we've been able to connect with our EVA students, our struggling learners, our kids that want reinforcement because everybody's aware there's one dedicated hour on Wednesday that we can have that conversation, whether it's five minutes or 45 minutes. And so the Wednesday is really pivotal for us in world language just because it allows us to stay ahead of the game and to connect with all learners. And, and I think that the learners also need that break, as Connor said, that allow them to do homework later than 8:30 in the morning because that's when I've declared the senior class to be in the Google meet. Thank you.
Thanks, Kim. I appreciate it. Carrie, you want to add anything on from your perspective?
I do. Hi, everyone. I'm Carrie Discher. I am an English teacher at Edina High School. I am also the parent of an eighth grader at Valley View Middle School, who will be a hybrid student as soon as his hockey team gets out of quarantine in a couple of days. So we are getting there and it has been an interesting year to say the very, very least. I would say this has probably been one of the more challenging years of my career. On the days that we are instructing students, both in person and online, it's kind of like threading a needle to find the balance of giving the attention of the students who are immediately in front of you and also giving attention to Eva students who are on your computer. And I feel like no matter what I do, I should be giving more attention to the other group. And so I can only imagine what that is going to be like when a higher percentage of students is sitting in front of me and I am still constantly reminding myself to come back to those Eva students and make sure that they feel included and make sure that they feel loved and make sure that they feel as though they are supported in my class. English teachers, of course, have a ton of discussion-based classes and we have writing-based classes. And so we do a ton of writing conferences. Our flex time on Wednesday is, you know, about an hour in length. I looked through what our teachers are offering to students this week and we are ranging from meeting with three kids for a very targeted intervention or enrichment opportunity, all the way up to one teacher meeting with over 50 kids during her flex time this week to make sure that students are caught up and making sure. And so that's the type of, of flex opportunity that we offer to students every single week. In addition, we have teachers, many teachers who are trying to find ways to meet with students even outside of that limited time block. We are, you know, meeting with, with students during lunches because when we have been in distance learning, lunch has been kind of a squidgier time period where you can kind of grab it when you need to. If you can meet with kids, that's awesome. And I think, you know, as we meet with our collaborative teams on Wednesdays, one of the things that continuously comes up, and you can see this comment in the report that Randy published, that has the, kind of all of the comments from our departments at the high school, is that really everything we try to do is to benefit the student experience, right? When I am meeting with my colleagues, it's to make sure that I am offering better curriculum and better activities and better things for my students. When students have a chance to meet with me to talk about their mental health or to catch up, it is in the service of making them, making them feel supported and making sure that their mental health is up to speed. And we know that that is a struggle this year. I have talked to more students this year who are feeling anxious or who are feeling depressed or who are feeling isolated than I ever have before. I just really think that the time that we have been allotted on Wednesdays is beneficial and we are using honestly, I think, every single minute to do something to make this, that make our students feel as though this is an okay school year. Because in so many ways, it has not been an okay school year. It has been a school year that has been full and riddled with challenges and hurdles and obstacles. And we just are trying to make it so that they are still getting the learning and the content that they need, but at the same time that they have and feel that safety net of support beneath them from teachers who care so much about them. I think that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Carrie. Really appreciate it. Back to you, Dr. Smazl.
Thank you. Thank you, Edina High School team. So appreciate again your voices coming into the space. And it's so important for us to hear from our teachers and hear from our students in anecdotal ways, in addition to some of the other data we normally pull together. With that, I'll turn it back to our board chair, Ellenberg, to navigate any questions that the board has.
Great. Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Smazl, and thank you to Principals Dudley, Anderson, Beaton, the teachers that were here tonight, and especially the students who have more bravery than I do because I could not go on a board meeting and present. And I promise my kids are doing their homework if any of their teachers are on the board meeting tonight. So before I turn it over to other board members for questions and comments, and I'm going to save all my questions to the end, I just wanted to comment that I am supportive of the administration's recommendation for the following reasons. I like the pacing of the model rollout because I believe it balances the need to get students in for more person, in-person time for their academic and social and emotional needs, but also balances our efforts to try to ensure teachers are getting vaccinated, along with affording us the opportunity to ensure our additional mitigation efforts are in place and working. I don't think we can underestimate the importance of these layered mitigation efforts to ensure our in-person learning model is sustainable and safe. Second, I also support the asynchronous Wednesday timeframe. I believe it supports our teachers and the fact that they're doing multimodal teaching. I believe that it supports our EVA students and the fact that they need additional time with their teachers. And we have upwards, over 20% of our population doing EVA. And I believe that it affords targeted intervention for our students as well. So I just wanted to give my opinion. What I'm going to do is do a round robin with our board members. I'm going to ask them to ask their top couple of questions. And then when they do ask their questions, if they could please comment on their support of the plan in general. And then specifically the timing of the plan rollout, as well as if they support the asynchronous Wednesday or not. The first person I'm going to ask to comment is Matt because I believe he has a time conflict and will be leaving the meeting shortly. So Matt, I'm going to turn it over to you. And hopefully he's still on the meeting, but... Well, Lenny, then I guess you get to go.
Okay. It did look, does look like Matt's still there. I've got a couple of questions, but I'll also note I'm going to be briefer than Erica because I share the same perspectives that she has in terms of, I do support the plan based on what I've heard so far, and I do support the Wednesday. The question that I have is, are we able to cover enough material in Ford, in that sort of four-one mode? So some of the students talk about the Wednesday being a catch-up day. And my experience with my kids is that every day was a, a, a learning day and not that it sort of Saturday or Sunday became the catch-up day. So any teacher want to jump in here? The question is on a four-one model, do you have enough time to cover the material consistent with prior years?
Carrie or Kim, do you guys want to answer that? Because I, I think the, the question is about just being able to get through the standards and the content.
Right.
I'm, I'm happy to answer that. We have been able so far to make sure that we are covering the standards in English. English is a little bit different than other content areas because we are not following, for example, a menu of content. We are more skills-based. And so we are able to cir, kind of circulate and go through and make sure in a variety and multiple times during the year that we have covered standards. In the English Language Arts classes, I have no concerns about us meeting those standards and covering the content necessary that we would in a normal school year with the four-one model.
And the, I don't know if anybody else wants to jump in, they can. But my second question is, is the, all these schedules seem like a ton of, of work, a lot more work than the normal. We're just going to have five days in person. Is the proposed schedule more manageable than what we're currently doing timewise? So four days, four-one versus two-one-two?
I think that's a great question. There has been conversation, at least in my classes, about what happens when you have, so one of my classes had 34 kids and I think I have seven Eva students. So we would have 27 kids in the room. But I think that we can still move forward on meeting the standards with everybody there. I would say one of the interesting things, even since coming back to hybrid last week, is a conversation where, again, at least in language, kids are actively participating on their in-person day. And then because, as I said, we're bringing them in on the, on a Google meet on their opposite day, we're getting a little bit less engagement from them when they're home. And so for us, I think that it, we would get better engagement with four kids in the room than two, one and two.
And will it increase your workload?
Not, I don't think in the way that we're running language classes right now because it's just more kids in person and fewer kids on the meet than in the way that we're lesson planning.
Great. Thank you.
So apparently Matt was talking but was having sound issues. So Matt, do you want to try to, try again? Okay, apologize. Apparently there's some technical issues with Mr. Fox. So Ellen, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. First, I, I want to say, this is one of the more difficult conversations. I'm listening to all of the teachers and understanding exactly how hard this must be for you. And especially given all of the changes we're making and on, on top of the pandemic, on top of just stress caused by the pandemic. So I, I understand that. And I, so I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to approach my comments. So I'm, I'm listening to the teachers. I'm also listening to parents and, and listening especially to the students. I think no one's having a, a good time this year and I, I'm, I'm just recognizing this. So here's where, I, I'll start by speaking to Wednesdays. It seems like that is the hot topic. I'm getting a whole lot of emails. This is the first time I'll ever say that I actually went into a meeting and I was getting emails as this was starting. So I haven't read everybody's feedback. I'm really sorry. But I want to acknowledge that I'm trying to figure out what's right for most of the students. And I've, I've heard months of stories of how difficult it has been for students to not be getting face-to-face instruction and how hard being out of the building has been for social, emotional development and how students are falling behind academically from not being in the classroom. I'm inclined to place the highest emphasis on maximizing in-person instructional time, particularly in the foundational subjects. I believe that the best way to do this is to get our students back in school five days a week as soon as possible, as neighboring districts are doing, especially in the middle schools. And I will, I'll, I, I think that the district should consider approaching Wednesday, looking at the needs in the middle school model versus high school. And there are some, some differences. And, and here I will, before I, I continue, I just want to ask a little bit about what is actually being proposed. So if we're going to be going to a four-day-a-week model, is that going to, what is this daily schedule going to look like for middle school and for high school? And so maybe if, if somebody could answer that question?
I cer, I certainly can answer that question for the high school. We'll stay right now. We don't have any plans to shift from our seven-period day schedule. So four-day-a-week students would do seven periods on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and would have a seven-period day on Wednesday as well. But it's just built around subject areas for each of those seven periods. So as Kim was alluding to, she would have a chunk of time during world language to bring in world language students. And Carrie, as an English teacher, would have time to bring in English students during her subject area period. So that would be the model that we would continue forward with this.
Okay.
Ellen, we would have the same schedule as we have right now.
Wait, Andy's, excuse me, Andy's still talking. Andy, but I can't hear you.
Yeah, no, I, I think I, I had explained. Do you have another question? So it's the same schedule that we're currently in right now. All we're doing is adding more students. So it's the exact same schedule that we're in right now. But essentially, the proposal is to slowly eliminate the alpha model so that you'd go with, instead of having kids come two days a week, they would come four days a week. But the same seven-period day schedule.
Okay. And, and, and just, there must be some delay in, in audio from you. I'm really sorry. I hope I'm not talking over you right now even. But my question is, in the, in a typical year, we had shifted from, we had three seven-period days and then an even day and an odd day, which allowed teachers time for that flex time. And I'm just, what I'm hearing is that in this model that you're proposing, it's a seven-period day, just no even day, no odd day.
We've had many discussions and I'm, I'm hoping you can hear me.
Now I can, but your mouth isn't moving.
Okay. Well, I'm hoping that you can hear me. I'm sorry if my, my, my computer setup is happening. So we had long discussions as we started about seven-period day or block. And when we started and we knew we were going to be in the hybrid and seeing kids just two days a week, we emphasized doing seven-period day so the teachers would be able to see kids on both Monday and Tuesday, see two days in a row, as opposed to doing odds and evens. And they wanted more actual daily FaceTime with students. So that's why as we shifted to the model that we were in, first hybrid and then distance, we stayed with the seven-period day schedule. And especially since we essentially added flex to Wednesdays instead of utilizing that typically how we would on a Thursday, once a week, when we were face-to-face, fully face-to-face, like pre-pandemic.
Okay. So, so, and in a typical year, teacher teaming and PLC work and intervention work would happen on the... and, um, intervention work would happen on the, just explain that to me. I'm just trying to figure out if we shifted to a, back to a typical year schedule, for example. What would that, how would, how would, how would you normally take care of those very important, um, needs?
Well, our collaboration time that our teachers did was typically, uh, before school started. So it was in the duty day. Teacher has an eight-hour duty day, but the bell schedule is a little bit less than that. So they would have about a forty-five minute meeting once a week, uh, for their teams to come together. But that's also when they had a modality that they were used to teaching in. They were teaching all face-to-face. Many teachers like Kim and Carrie have, have taught in the subject for a number of years. They were continuing to adjust curriculum, but they're not completely rewriting a new curriculum daily. I mean, ask Carrie and Kim. They feel like new teachers this year and they're not new teachers, um, because they are literally daily um, creating new curriculum to be in this online format. So the amount of time needed for collaboration, I think is, is certainly much more this year. But I'm a fan of giving our teachers as much time, um, as we can afford them to be able to work together. Because very much research shows that when our teachers have an opportunity to collaborate and work on student needs, um, think about their curriculum, think about assessments, they put together a better product for our students. So super important. But in a typical year, it would be a before-school meeting once a week.
And then, um, one of the things that I've always hoped for was that when, um, and when and if we would be able to go back to full-time, that we would also be able to consider separating, um, Eva students from, um, the hybrid students so that teachers would not have to, or so many teachers would not have to have the responsibility of meeting the needs of both hybrid students and Eva students. This always seemed to be, um, almost in, like a very challenging, um, task if, you know, as everyone is saying, every single teacher seems to be building their own curriculum and their, and, and meeting the needs of all of these students. And, and it just seems so inefficient to me. Um, especially in some of our larger depart- departments when we have multiple teachers teaching the same subject. So my hope was, and I'm just wondering if the district has ever considered for finishing up this year. And as the board has just said, we are going to be looking at Eva, but not in this format. There must be some teachers that are considering teaching this next year. Has the district looked at trying to separate those tasks, um, for the remainder of this year?
Uh, I can answer that, that question again. We have, we, we looked at creating Eva-only sections before the school year started in August. Carrie and Kim were part of those conversations as we were trying to design what our hybrid model would be. We looked at it again at the semester to say, what are the possibilities of doing that? First, from a scheduling standpoint, I feel like we've addressed this question at previous board meetings. Is, is students losing classes that they wanted? Teachers teaching new preps that they hadn't taught before. So Carrie Dishar would teach US Lit and English nine and English ten, um, as opposed to maybe just teaching the one or two preps that she had before. World language classes, um, having all the levels in one section. So Kim would teach French one through five in one hour because we would put all the Eva kids into that room with her. And these are the things that were coming up. And in the end, even in those instances, if we fought and fought and tried and tried to create a couple of Eva sections here and there throughout the school, as soon as one student has to quarantine, then the teacher has to work with students both online and face-to-face. They have to create online curriculum because that would be my expectation is that they would continue to work with those students at home. So in the end, we made the decision to base our model this year while we were in a pandemic, based on an online model to create online curriculum that hybrid students would be able to participate in and get support and, and make progress when face-to-face. So that's where we started uh, to try to make this tangible and possible for our teachers. Now next year, and we're doing registration right now, and we have hundreds of kids that are choosing online classes for next year. So next year, kids will know what they are choosing. They are choosing an online class and we will assign a teacher to teach an online class. And there will be only online students in that online class. And there will only be face-to-face students in the face-to-face class. So, um, but the difficulty of, uh, doing that on the fly when students had already made their choices was difficult. And we have been trying to manage that all year. So I don't know if anything else, Carrie or Kim, that you want to add, add to that?
Um, I don't have anything to add, but I can just verify that we spent a ton of time as a lead staff uh, or a lead team talking about the possibility of having separate Eva and hybrid sections. And believe me that when I say that that was what all of us wanted. But we had some of the, I think, smartest people looking at the numbers and we just could not make it work with keeping, letting kids keep the classes that we wanted to and also making sure that teachers had schedules that were manageable and we're not having four or five different preps in a single day.
Sorry, go ahead, Kimberly.
Well, I, I guess the part that at this late date, I, I'm not necessarily talking about the future, but I think in some ways, some of these classes have gelled, considering we've done two months of online learning and all the kids were in the Google meet. And so, I, I would come back to my French cinema class, which, and this is, this is my voice, my personal opinion as one teacher, but that's a group of kids that has been doing French for twelve years together. And it, and, and I can't imagine finishing the year without them all in the same space because some of them are Eva and some of them aren't. I, I want them to, I'm, I want to give them as much of an experience to finish their senior year as a team as they got when they were kindergartners. And I think that's probably the same for a lot of these classes at this point in the year.
Okay.
So Ellen, if you could comment, if you could comment on the pacing of the rollout, and then I'm going to move on to another board member because we can come back to other questions, but I want to make sure other board members get a chance to, um, get their initial comments in.
Okay, um, as far as pacing, I think that, um, both at the middle school, uh, at, both at the middle school level and at the high school level, um, we have built in, um, substantial flex time. Um, we've added additional, one additional class during the school day. And, um, we have a, every day flex time in the middle school schedule. It seems like this flex time should provide the time for the type of, um, interventions that Wednesdays would be used for under the four-day-per-week plan. And because of that flex time, um, we've, we've historically offered fewer hours of face-to-face instructional time in the middle schools. That, uh, I'm very concerned that that instructional time is not going to be able to be recouped between now and the end of the school year. Um, for example, if we return, even if we re- we increase our, our time back and, um, have every single Wednesday, it's, it's basically two to, to three weeks of school. And, um, in fact, if you look at the, just the way that the middle school model works, that is a lot of instructional time. And, um, and I'm, I'm concerned because if we don't get that instructional time this year, how are we going to make it up? Is this going to be a summer school or is this going to be? I don't know. I, I, additional interventions next year. So, um, I'm just saying, I would, um, I am concerned about the slow rollout. I don't think that, um, that the logistic, what I've heard about the logistical reasons, um, are not convincing for me to say that, um, our students shouldn't be back in school five days a week as soon as possible.
Um, Julie?
Thanks, Erica. Um, so I have just a couple of questions. Uh, but first, before I even start, I just want to say thank you so much to the students who spoke today and, I mean, a lot of bravery, um, and all the students that have emailed the board also. Thank you for your emails and sharing your opinion. I think that student voice is just essential to, um, to all the work that we do. Um, and one thing too, I'm, I think today's a really exciting day for our district. I think, uh, this is, we have really gone through a year together. And I'm thrilled at the idea of bringing our students back for more in-person learning. So I just want to say that. I was at the high school dropping something off today and the energy and the excitement and students volunteering at a masking table to say, hey, welcome. Do you need any, an extra mask? I'm sure one of my kids probably forgot theirs and they probably got it there. But I just, I, I want to just reset this because I really think this, um, this year has, if anything, has taught us anything is that we, there aren't two sides to this decision to bring students back. And if we have a synchronous day in synchronous slash asynchronous day on Wednesdays with learning going on, I, I think there are thousands of sides. As we heard from the students, everyone comes at this a little bit differently and there's a lot of nuances. So I just wanted to say that out loud because I, I think it needs a shout out. So my quick questions are, how many teachers at, at both the high school and, um, the both the middle schools have students both in EVA and in the classroom?
Uh, nearly, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I jumped the gun there. I was so excited to let you know that it's a great reminder that all eh, ninety-nine percent of middle school teachers have to teach both cohorts. And so, um, they're caring for those learners for any number of reasons who aren't able to be physically present. It's a heavy lift, as you heard from, uh, from the, uh, staff members here tonight. And, um, so we don't have the luxury with our model to create, uh, those, uh, Eva-only and in-person-only sections. Lots of reasons for that. Uh, and then all those other reasons that Principal Beaton cited. A large challenge. Uh, so, uh, for all practical purposes, a hundred percent of middle school teachers have to do both things and it's incredibly difficult.
Yep. Okay. And same, Andy, at the high school, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I think that we had created a couple of sections here and there in special education and, and ML, we were able to do with the se- sections, but actually some of those have even started to cross over a little bit, uh, second semester versus first, but there's a couple. But I'd say, uh, yeah, ninety-nine point something, um, percent of sections in our building. Teachers are working with both, um, Eva and hybrid students.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful just for perspective. Um, and then one question that's come up a, a couple of different times. It's kind of a nuance in the, in the plan, but you know, students that, um, opted into Eva at the second semester and not, and, and not hybrid, and now that we are moving to a hybrid model that has more in-person learning, four days, do we anticipate that we could potentially make a path for those students to come back in if they want to? And I don't know what the number of those students are. I don't know if we know the number of those students or we do. But like, is that in the plan? I mean, maybe not tomorrow, but as we roll out these next couple of weeks, can any of you guys talk to that?
Sure, I can address that question. Um, uh, as we said, and then we've said before, in our current model right now, our teachers are able to do six feet of distancing in their classroom based on the section sizes, what we do at lunch. And so if, um, Tim Anderson, we determine that he tests positive and he is in a classroom with Carrie Dishar and they are six feet of distance, there is not a close contact. And I think we emphasize, and Nick did, that when you add more students to the classroom, you will create more close contacts. That's just a given. The guidelines that have come from the governor have said, um, do six feet when feasible, but asking it says three feet must be maintained. Okay, so, uh, we are now working on our sections as we slowly eliminate the alpha model to see what the section sizes are. So Kim gave an example of one of her classes that has twenty-seven hybrid students and five Eva students. Okay, something like that. Okay? I can't remember what the exact number was, but let's say twenty-seven face-to-face. We'll have to look at her classroom. And the teachers are doing that now to see, can Kim effectively do three feet of distancing in a classroom with twenty-seven? And she, and because we want teachers also, we want teachers to do six feet of distancing. So can she effectively do that? And so we're looking at it by section by section to see what's the, what's her room like where she works? And can we do that three feet of distancing in her classroom? So that's the expectation. So we have over nine hundred students that are currently Eva. So over thirty percent of our students are currently Eva. If we invited them all back right now with the current guidelines, um, we likely would not be able to do three feet of distancing in those classrooms. Now, if that is not something that we are concerned about in this district, then you can make that decision. But we're just from a practicality, we currently, right now, we would need those Eva students to continue. However, is another caveat, case numbers and case rates continue to decline, which is awesome. And if they get to that point where they are ten and below, the guidelines say we don't have to be concerned about that social distancing piece. So if those case numbers are getting to that point, then absolutely, we might have that conversation, say, are you an Eva student that is interested in coming back to school? Because we don't have to do those same kind of guidelines. And they could smoothly because, um, our sections are intact. Does that make sense? So Kim's Eva students could potentially come back to her class if we are getting those case rates to the point where we're not concerned about the social distancing guidelines. It's kind of a long answer.
No, it's helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it's helpful. I mean, nine hundred students and, and you know, I, I don't know what the number is, how many would even want to come back, you know, but like, if we ha- I know we have students that move, they're, you know, it's, it's a very easy transition, easier. I shouldn't say nothing's been easy, an easier transition from hybrid into EVA, right? And that switch back. So if that, if there's movement there and then it opens up space. I just wanted to say, are you guys looking at it a case-by-case basis as students call and, and the different needs? Um, so, okay.
Yeah, and I would say we're always going to be prioritizing, um, what the student needs. It's the same thing we're talking about with these, um, tier-one students. We've got about eighty-five students in the building already, four days a week. March eighth, we're proposing, I have a list of a hundred and seven tier-two students that we're going to invite in four days a week. Um, and some of those are Eva and some of them are hybrid. So it'll be that combination. So, you know, we're gradually increasing the number of students that are going to be in those classrooms. And we are expected at this point now, based on the current guidelines, to maintain three feet of distancing in those classrooms.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and then I just, just kind of where, where my thoughts are right now, um, is for pacing and the rollout. I think it's, I think it's a smart pacing. I think it allows for a lot of sustainability for the mitigation layers that we're, we're adding in, the operations. Um, I think that really, if you go back, it really ties back to our priorities and the approach and strategy that we as a board approved in July, Erica mentioned at the beginning of this meeting. And it really falls in line with that, that, that to make sure we're moving so that we can sustain this model. Um, I don't think, um, there's a lot of work going on and a lot of student needs in getting back in the school. And I want to, I, I'm full in support of making sure that we're pacing it so that we're successful. Um, and that has proven to be the case this whole year. So, um, I'm in support of that. And then second, in terms of our Wednesdays, you know, it's what I think isn't, is hard to, um, and, and for the community and also as a board member is like, you know, we set precedent that in the elementary level, we went back five days, right? But the difference is that the implementation is very different at the secondary level, right? The elementary teachers are not teaching both two different, completely different cohorts at the same time. So I think that's, I, I've heard that used a couple of different times that there's precedent there, but really it's two different, it's two different things going on. So I think that utilizing those Wednesdays, um, and just being, continuing to be really intentional. And if there's, you know, places that we can improve, of course, I know you guys are always looking for ways to improve, but I think it is effective. I think it's efficient and I think it really supports student needs. And I think that is, that's all I got. So, thank you. Good job.
Thank you, Julie. Owen, before I turn it over to you, Matt's computer microphone isn't working. So he emailed me his thoughts. So I was just going to share them. He said, please share my thoughts. Apologies, my microphone isn't working. I very much appreciate that we are moving forward with methodical plans. We have brought back K2, then 3.5, then hybrid, and now moving back toward full, in quotes. I recognize that students express needing and desire in some semblance of consistency during this very challenging year. So I do not believe it is wise to push the administration to change on the fly in opposition to their guidance, along with all three principles via asking them to deviate from this plan today. Meaning I support steps to bring kids back four days a week in the next several weeks. But to be very clear, I support plan for today. I would like to see kids back in the classroom five days a week as soon as the system can tolerate it. I recognize that teaching EVA and live are hard, that people are exhausted in the schools, at home and across the community. But while normal won't be normal for a while, still every day we can help get kids back with their peers, the better. So I would like a plan to shift back to five days after spring break. And again, deeply appreciate all the efforts of our staff, families and students to push forward while the world consistently changes around them. Thank you. So that was Matt's feedback. Owen, do you want to go ahead?
Yes, thank you, Erica. I guess one of the advantages of being at the end here is I get to benefit from the accumulated wisdom of my peers. I've got a question first off. Did I hear that we are, is this a plan, the four to one plan? A plan to end the school year with? Is that the idea or are we just taking it one month at a time? Did I miss that? Did we address that?
I would, Randy, can you address that? Or John?
I would, I would say that we continue with this plan and as we've been doing the whole year, look at it again in April, just so that we give some time to it. And then see what decisions we, we need to make relative to the plan. Give people to get beyond the pivot instead of doing it or changing it right away or examining it right away. Give people some time to be in it for a while. So I would recommend we do that sometime, third or fourth week in April.
Okay, so we're, the, the idea is to play it by ear for a bit here. Okay. I want to second a couple of things that Julie said, but by far and away the most is that I think that this, I don't know if this is, these are the words you use, Julie. But on one level, this is a day of celebration. We have been wanting to get our kids back into school for a long, long, long time. And people are very, very happy about the fact that that's coming up. And thank you, administration, for coming up with a coherent plan to do that. Absolutely thrilled. The second comment that Julie had was the question of Eva to face-to-face. And Andy, basically you answered that with a capacity rationale, that the capacity is difficult to, the face-to-face capacity is difficult to absorb in the school right now because of that. I don't even need a response to this, but I think I would lobby if that becomes an issue. First of all, I would say, I would suggest, I would like to be able to get as many Eva students who want to come back face-to-face as possible. And to accommodate that, given Andy that you said there's a capacity issue, think creatively, putting some classrooms in, in flex places. It's possible to put some classrooms in hallways or gyms. So, and I don't need a response to that, just something to put in, in your wheelhouse. So my larger remarks are, again, I just want to underscore the fact, I'm thrilled that we're getting back face-to-face. We've been looking at this for a long time. And I'm thrilled for our students. I'm thrilled for our parents. And I'm thrilled for the teachers because I think it's going to be easier than a hybrid model for teaching. So the, the, the issues right at hand, whether, when to start and then Wednesday. That to me is a tough call. I was thrilled to actually hear Elizabeth Teskey, she was one of the presenters from Valley View. I've known, or Southview, I've known Elizabeth for years through scouts. And she is organized beyond her years and she's a leader beyond her years too. So a very good choice of a representative and a voice. And so there, there's a real solid argument for taking, having Wednesday be an asynchronous day. We heard a series of very coherent rationales presented to us. And I was a stand-up computer instructor at the Science Museum for 18 years. And I've told a number of teachers that I've worked with, how challenging. I think I would have found it to be teaching my computer class with my live students right there. And at the same time, having to monitor classes out there in Cyberland. And let alone these students being adolescents, not adults. So I think it presents a significant balancing act. That's so, there are some trade-offs. And there is tremendous pent-up demand in the community for full five-day face-to-face. And we've just been receiving an on, an ongoing set of emails from parents in the community saying, we would really, really like full five-day face-to-face. And so I just want to clearly express that, that there, we're hearing you, I'm hearing you, that there, we're all hearing you. That there's a tremendous desire to not miss any more days of school, to get our kids back, to make up our lost days. And then I can say that part of that is coming out of the, the fact that this year, for some students, has been absolutely disastrous. And it's hit my house, my home. And it, you don't like seeing things going south. And so what's, what's missing with distance learning for many students is the in-person accountability and the in-person support. The inhibitions for a lot of adolescents are lower when they can actually see the teacher right in front of them and talk, drop their guard and so forth. In front of a screen, that's very difficult. So for me, when I look at this asynchronous day, I'm hearing, I'm hearing the rationale for having it. By the same token, I'm also very much aware of the strong desire to get our kids back in face-to-face. And so Erica, you put a question to us, where do we actually land? And I think where I land is doing something a little bit more creative, I suppose. And that would be a late start on a Wednesday, on Wednesdays. Give a little more time for the teachers, clearly, but then give some more face-to-face. And then a, another question or desire on my part would be to have us move back to accelerate our kickoff of this two weeks. And again, because of the strong, strong demand to get our kids back into school. So those are my, those are my comments, Erica.
Thank you, Owen. I'm Janie.
Thanks Erica. I'm going to be completely honest and, and tell all you guys and, and anybody who's out there watching. I'm not sure how many community members we have out there right now. But this has been probably one of the hardest decisions, kind of one of the hardest thought processes that I've had to go through. In all honesty, my gut reaction right away was to say, five days a week. It's five days a week for a lot of the reasons that, kind of some of the stuff that Owen just mentioned. But in actually reading through the hundreds of emails that we've gotten from parents, a lot from students, it's been really amazing to hear from students and having some great conversations with our educational leaders. One of the things I realize is it's our job to make sure that we are doing what's best for all students, right? Like it's not just some students, but we need to do what's best for all students. And we have a system in place of, to have our secondary teachers teach two models. That's the decision that we made. It's definitely too soon for us to be Monday morning quarterbacking that decision. Definitely not the time for us to be rearranging and shifting and giving students new teachers and new schedules and having teachers get used to new students. You know, there are other districts that made a different decision. I actually took a walk with a friend today who's in a district that made a different decision. And their secondary teachers either teach distance or they teach in-person. And they have their own set of issues, right? There, there is no perfect solution. Their students don't have the same, you know, vast category of classes that they could choose from that our students get to. They don't have access to as much of the enriched content as our students have. It, it's different. There's trade-offs. And I think it's too soon for any of us to decide which is better. It's the model that we have and our decisions have to be based on what's best for all students. So with that said, actually hearing and listening to what's been told to us, I, I am going to say that I'm supportive of having the four-in-one week with the support for students on Wednesdays. I've heard loud and clear that that's really important for Eva students. And we have to respect that and we have to respect that they have, their needs are just as important as, as students who are face-to-face. With that said, the other thing that I've read between the lines and heard very loud and clear from people who have voiced it is that that Wednesday day, to me, I feel as if the desire to have more structured opportunities for kids to use their, their student agency that, that we're trying to grow in them and to have more opportunities for them to get help when they need it is really important. I know I've got a middle schooler, I've got a high schooler. You know, my middle schooler is very engaged on Wednesdays with synchronous activities and, and some, some outreaches for flex and some enrichment and whatnot. And I, I understand that the, the middle school model looks a little bit different than the intervention model at the high school. But I guess what I'm, I guess I would like to challenge the secondary leaders to really say, are we using every single opportunity for structured time for our students to connect with their teachers to the best of our ability, knowing that we're going to keep this four-in-one schedule? So that's, that's where I land with that. One of the things I want to make sure I point out though, is that Wednesdays are, there's learning going on in my house on Wednesdays. It's not, it, it's not a day off. My kids are definitely engaged. I think the intention of all teachers is that students are going to be engaged in learning on Wednesdays. So I don't want anybody to think that by supporting this, this model that I or any other board member would say, we are in support if students have Wednesdays off. And, and because that's not the case. The engagement and the opportunity for help and for enrichment, it needs to be a part of it. So I wanted to make sure that I let, I let that be known. As far as the, the pacing, well, actually I do want to go back and say, I, I like Julie and Owen, really hope that we can create a path to allow for more Eva students to come back into the building when it's safe. So I want to make sure that I say that out loud because I do think that's important to honor that ability for, for those students. I think the pacing part, I would love for us to accelerate this by a week, but only if it's safe. I would love for us to accelerate it by a week, only if we can say for sure that by doing that, that our students and our staff and all of those mitigation efforts and everything will be in place and be ready to roll in, in the right way. If that can't be done, then I fully support the, the plan that you have put forth with that. So I think those are all the points. I was trying to keep track of them all in my head. So I'll let you take over, Erica.
Thank you, Janie. So I just want to, before I move on to more questions, I just want to wrap up this section. It sounds like the majority of the boards supports the plan as is. That like Janie says, there was some board interest accelerating the plan, but only if it can be done safely. And then there's interest in, and you mentioned this, John, looking at the plan, which we would do anyway, towards the end of April and then looking at the, the, the Wednesday or how the plan's working and getting back to the board on, on that aspect of the plan as well as other parts of the plan. Is that?
That makes sense.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. And so I want to open it back up to board members for additional questions. But first I'm going to ask my questions since I haven't had a chance. I wanted to first support some comments other board members made. One is, I wanted to reiterate what Owen, Julie and Janie said, it's like the telephone game, about trying to find a pathway for EVA students. And maybe it's not the first week or second week, but as things settle in and we, you do the class counts, if there are ways that we can find a pathway for Eva, Eva students to get in. And then I also think we had, we should ask, there could be families that aren't actually comfortable with the reduction in social distancing. And we need to make sure that we're giving families the opportunity if they want to actually prep EVA at this point, because they aren't comfortable with the reduction in social distancing. And that being said, I don't know, I actually don't think Jeff Jorgensen is on the call anymore. But maybe John or Randy, you can address this. I don't know if it would be part of the IEP process or, or some other process. But if we have students that are, have medical issues where they're, they, the six-foot social distancing is almost a necessity because they have risk factors for COVID. Are we able to accommodate that? I would hate for students not to be able to come to in-person school because we have made the decision to reduce social distancing because they actually have a medical condition and their only option now is not, is EVA. So I just wanted to have a better understanding if we are able to do anything for students in a situation.
Sorry. I did talk to Jeff about this and that is being handled by case managers. Case managers are communicating with their families and accommodating, you know, the, the, you know, the safe learning environment for, for their kids. So Jeff has had a couple of meetings with case managers and leads at, at the secondaries and have made that, that point. They would, they would do that by a case-by-case basis, based on the parents' wishes.
Okay, all right. And then my last question for now is, one of the, I guess, one of the things that I'm most concerned about is actually unstructured time within the school day. And that surrounds lunchtime and bus time. And I was wondering if someone could provide me more information about what we're going to do during lunchtime? How far apart we think students are going to be spaced? Because the reality is they're going to be unmasked. And I, I just wanted more information about that and how close kids are going to be together. And, and then also for bus time, if someone could explain to me the governor's new orders, how that relates to social distancing on the bus? Those two questions, I'd appreciate it.
Thanks. I'll, I'll defer on the bus question, but in terms of lunch, the only way we can maintain safety for students at lunch is to open up a second lunch space. So in the case of Southview, for example, we need to find open space and that per buildings and grounds will give us the adequate ventilation that Mr. Hamilton was talking about. And so in our case, we'll move lunch to, half of lunch to another gymnasium. I know the other two sites have similar strategies. They'll follow the guidelines in terms of seating arrangements so that we can adequately contact trace. And we'll be working to maintain that six-feet distance, if at all possible. And so we'll have to come up with some resources to get extra tables and some extra staff supervision. But we think we can do that and we're going to do a walkthrough tomorrow to see if we can accommodate that. And I think it's similar at the other sites. And we're, we're experimenting with QR codes and stuff for contact tracing purposes.
Okay, I just wanted, I wasn't sure if we were still trying to maintain. Okay, I just wanted, I wasn't sure if we were still trying to maintain six feet at lunch or if that was gonna shrink. So I just wanted to make sure of that. Okay. And then John or could you speak to transportation? Are we still supposed to maintain? I thought I read we're still, still supposed to maintain a certain distance on buses, but I'm not sure how to do that.
Randy, you talked about that in your opening remarks, so.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just add a little bit to Cherry Ellenberg. Um, in terms of busing, we still need to have six feet of distance between the drivers and the students. And so what effectively happens is the first two rows on the buses get eliminated in terms of student seating. And so that reduces the capacity of the buses to about forty. And then we have two students in a seat typically for the rest of the bus. So what um, David is working through is from a capacity standpoint, we have some routes that are over our legal capacity now when we uh, take those students out of those first two rows. And so he's going to um, work with some families. We'll have to see if we have some volunteer families that um, can volunteer to transport their child um, so that we can lighten those routes or see if we can adjust some routes to be able to balance out the numbers of kids on the bus. And I know that, that's something David's continuing to work on.
Okay, thank you. Owen?
Oh, uh, thank you. My um, one of my concerns is the learning loss. And we are not really talking about that here tonight, but I would like to um, deal with how we can measure that and what we can do to remediate it. Uh, whether we're talking summer school, whether we're talking holding, letting, letting parents have their uh, child uh, stay back a grade. Um, so at some point I'd be interested in having a discussion about that. And it's not unique to Dina. So um,
That's on our, that's on our March sixteenth board meeting.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep. Owen, oops, Ellen?
Yeah, I um, I just wanted to weigh in, um, since I didn't comment on our students that are Eva students. And I am, I'm very uh, concerned that if a parent had certain circumstances where they were offered a choice between Eva or hybrid and they chose Eva. And now we're saying um, you cannot come back to in-person learning because you chose Eva. Um, I, I'm concerned that that just doesn't seem right to me. And I, I know that you, that many other board members talked about finding safe pathways. But I feel a little stronger than this. I, I just feel as if we know what's right for our students um, and our parents know what's right for their students. And I'm going to, I, I would hope that the district would um, make it work so that if a student wants to come back to in-person learning, that they can do so. And, and that's, that I, I, I feel very strongly about that. Things are changing in families by the minute. Um, it's a very fluid um, situation for many families. Some, some, some may have um, needed to protect family members in the winter, but now they have vaccination, they've received their vaccination. So that's not an issue. Just don't, I, I want to work a little bit harder and not just say, well, look at it. I, I, I would suggest that we don't decline students from the, from wishing to come back to our schools. Thank you.
Erica, could I jump in?
Sure.
So that makes five of us, I think, that have strong opinions about Eva having, Eva students having the chance to go back face to face. So I wonder if we could revisit that right now and maybe gauge uh, sentiment from the five of us. We haven't heard Lenny um, speak about it. So Julie, Julie's raising her hand. What do you think, Julie?
Well, I want to make it clear that I want a pathway for EVA students to come back in, but we're mandated by the state of Minnesota to have a minimum of three feet between students. And so I'm not exactly sure um, and, and maybe you or Ellen have a plan for how we can cram more students in and still maintain the three feet. But we have an obligation to all the people that are in person right now to increase the time that they're in person. And then what my suggestion is, is that we try to find a way to get other students that want to come in, in. I, the only other option we have is to re-prep our entire learning model. And quite frankly, that's a disaster for our district. That would take Andy or Tim or Sean, how many weeks does it take to rebalance our classrooms? I mean, it takes what, like three weeks?
Yeah. And I, maybe I can just jump in. I, I think that, just so you know, from administrators, we have every intent and we would love to have all of our students back. And if you asked our teachers here, they would be very comfortable teaching in one learning model face to face. That would make them very happy. And we're excited about that possibility as case numbers continue to go down. I think that some of the other solutions I think we have to think about, and I, and I think I, I addressed this when Julie asked that question. Um, you know, if those case numbers do continue to decline and that will depend on community efforts, masking, vaccines, that will all have a positive impact on those case rates going down. And then we will be inviting Eva students if they want to come back. We don't have to do the social distancing. Now, but if I look at a class, like one of Kim's classes, let's say overall, in one of her sections, she has thirty-four students. Okay, so um, thirty-four students, I know where her classroom is, uh, will not be separated by three feet. They will be closer than three feet. So our options are, if we had all those students back in the room, is to reassign those students or ask him to um, set up her class to be in three groups. And two groups come in face to face and one of them goes online each day with the other Eva students. Um, so I mean, these are the things that we would have to do. And then again, where do those students go? If I'm doing that schoolwide, that's a lot of students um, out in the hallways and all over our school. And that's not even accounting for when students or when teachers are out. Um, and we have to do virtual subs. So there's a, I think you just have to give us some time to be able to um, move through this addition of students and do it well before we move on to the next step. And I, and I like the idea when we're talking about a celebration. It is a celebration that we are going from distance learning to hybrid to now a four day a week model. Um, and we just need time to be able to put that in place um, effectively. The other thing you should be aware of is that some of the conversation about bringing more students back has actually led some of our families to elect Eva, even now, even in the last couple of weeks. Um, you have to remember that our Eva numbers started in the fall in the five hundreds. At semester time, they were in the seven hundreds and now they're over nine hundred. So um, there are students and families that are choosing this for health and safety, but some of them are also choosing it because um, they think the instructional model is, it works for them. While absolutely others want to come back and need to come back face to face, um, and they will do better face to face. So I'm just asking for the gift of time um, as we roll out this model. Um, and we're trying to balance that consideration for our staff as we slowly increase the, the numbers of students in our building.
Mr. Ron Hauvde, I saw you had a hand raised.
Oh, thanks. I didn't, I was thinking, I was so surprised to hear my name. Um, thank you. Uh, just hearing, I have a, I think a quick, unique perspective to share. Um, we have a seventh grade EVA student. Um, we also have the luxury of, of having chose that not for health and reasons. Um, and so I feel, we feel fortunate for that. Like we chose it, uh, and he thought it was a good learning model for him. And, and then as a teacher, knowing we are opening back up, I had the same thoughts you're saying right now. Like, wait a minute, we, we signed that Google Doc under um, different uh, different um, guidelines, if you will. So uh, my wife and I had this discussion and I was on this, the side of, hey, uh, he should get to come back. And she was on the side of, we, you know, we filled out a form and we committed and I'm, and you know, and we asked him and he's okay staying home. So we, I, I can say this from a place of, like I said, luxury. We can, but hearing what Andy just said, as a parent, I totally agree with what I heard. And I'm not just saying that because I'm a teacher. Um, this is a parent of an EVA student uh, who could come back saying that, like, I hear what you're saying. That's totally reasonable. Um, it's totally reasonable. So I, I think a lot of parents would buy that. Not buy that, but you know, believe that. That's just what's best for the system.
Thank you. I'm Julie.
Yeah, I mean, I think Andy, you just, I, I just wanted to kind of echo what Erica said. Um, Owen, I know you were talking about, well, we have, you know, um, a quorum of board members that want this. I, I did not want this as a mandate to the administration. I never, I didn't, that's not my thinking behind this. This is, can we have a pathway to get students back? And I heard from all of our principals that yes, that is part of the plan. I think one of the most important things, and we have, we've talked about this before, but it's just a reminder that we are operating in the current timeframe right now. And we've had to do that. And it takes a remarkable amount of patience for all of us, right? Students, teachers, administrators, families, the community. I mean, uh, this is going on in districts everywhere, but we're in a, right now, our district is in a really good space, right? We're, are, are currently, we're in a good space. And I think if we continue that, then there will be, I, I trust that if there is a way to get more students back in that would like to come back in, I, I have no doubt that we will get there um, if we are able to. But I also don't think it's our place, I, I'm, I'm not comfortable mandating that. So I just wanted to make that clarification because I think it's an important one. So that's it.
Ellen and then Lenny, I think you have your hand up also.
Yeah, I think um, part of the reason that I, 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 I'm just hoping that we will be asking our parents and students um, about what their preferences are relatively quickly. Because this is, it's the, it's the question of will we be able to make it? Will there be space for us? This is the uncertainty of this and the stress that the pandemic is causing and it um, and I'm, I'm hoping and I'll ask, when will we be asking our parents um, what they would prefer?
So we did ask not too long ago for preference for semester two. So um, help me understand, Ellen, do you want us to do it a second time?
Yes.
For this semester?
Yes. I want to know which, given um, given our current situation where the majority of the board wants um, a shift is, is following the recommendation of the, the administration and the shift will be four day in-person. Um, I'm just wondering how many parents would choose that in-person model or Eva? I, I, I'm, I'm assuming you're gonna ask that, aren't you?
So asking between the four day and Eva, so have, hasn't that preference already happened? Am I missing something? Randy, maybe you can help.
I think what Ellen's saying is that now that we're, we're increasing the amount of time that hybrid students are having for in-person, does that, does that change the, the nature of this such that we should go back and ask about that? And I think if we're trying to identify the families that have that choice, we'll have to ask them at some point. We just need to figure out what the time of that is. And then what would be the conditions that would allow us to be able to bring back additional students? And we'll, we will have a challenge of um, you know, if we have more that want to come back than we can safely do, we're gonna have to figure that out. So we're, we're gonna have to meet, I think, as a secondary team and, and talk about that in terms of a process and what might make sense and what would be a timeline.
And I think also Randy, we should uh, this is part of a incident command team, just to think about the timing of it. Um, as we will watch the numbers, you know, if they continue to drop, like provide more flexibility for that movement to happen. Or less flexibility for that matter.
Good. And then Janie?
Sure. Uh, since Owen called me out for not having commented on this issue, I thought I would, would weigh in. I mean, I, I do share everyone else's concern about people who signed up for Eva thinking that hybrid was two days a week and not four. And so I'm not sitting here saying that we need to immediately open up the gates and allow all them in, but I do think we have to figure out what are the numbers. And so I do think it makes sense to go and ask people again. Cause for example, if we find out that there's only a twenty person shift, then there's probably a way to accommodate it. Cause again, the number of people who picked Eva are still gonna pick it because they're still gonna be concerned about the health issues. So rather than guess about whether we can accommodate it, let's figure it out. In doing so, I think we have to make clear to parents that there are no promises that, that right now the default is if you signed up for Eva, then you're in Eva until there's a, a change. But we'd like to know in the event that we could accommodate. So I think there has to be clarity in the message. Um, the other thing that Janie mentioned earlier, you know, I actually had the same reaction she did when this first came up, which is why can't we do five days? And it is through listening to teachers, students, administrators, um, and sort of trying to figure out what makes sense that got me to the point of landing and saying, okay, four. Cause I looked at versions of this and said, we need to go more aggressively, but I don't really think that that makes sense based upon the information we've received tonight and the information that I've read. So a- again, it's not an easy decision for people who are out there looking. Just because we come up with a definitive response, doesn't mean we haven't waited, doesn't mean that we haven't wrestled with it. It does mean that our function is at some point to make a definitive conclusion. And it has to be one or another. So that's it.
Janie and then back to Owen.
So I want to make it clear, what I, I mentioned that I, I am in favor, as Lenny said, A, finding out how many students we're talking about that want to come back in, who are Eva that want to come back in um, face to face. But what I don't want it to do is to get ahead of or have it slow down our process of bringing back our students in um, as many days as possible. So I would hope that if that's something that we do, that it can be done um, consecutively with the planning of getting kids back in school and that if it means a little bit longer in some cases um, to get those kids back in, I don't want it to hamper the progress that we're talking about in the timeline that we've talked about for getting kids back in four days. So I want to make sure that I was, I was clear about that.
Thanks, Janie.
Where Janie just said, yes, I wouldn't want this to disrupt the rollout of our plan to get the kids back into school a lot more. I want to underscore what Ellen said is that uh, I think the decision for um, parents was that it was Eva versus hybrid and now it's a different story. And so um, if we could get a census of as soon as possible, what uh, the Eva parents would like now that we are going back face to face uh, for twice the amount of time, what that, what that community interest would be. So I would find that very helpful to know how many, how many folks are in that camp.
Julie?
I just wanted to make one other quick comment. You know, when, when we communicated this out with the shift, um, we did talk about, you know, hybrid could shift to more days in person. So I don't want it, it's, 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 it's just this, this conversation is making it sound like this is like a bait and switch from the district. And that's not the case at all that's been going on. So I, I feel that that's just an important point to make that families signed up knowing that the hybrid model and that there's always, the plan from, that we've put out from last July is that if we were able to get the kids in for more in-person learning through the hybrid model, that was always going to be the plan. That is always, but what we've been working towards and we're here and we got here. So I just want to make sure that our principals don't feel swallowed up by adding this layer on when they're telling us they need some time in the grace of time. So I want to be really clear. So I want to be really clear, at least from my point. I, I want that grace of time so that we can do this right and look for pathways. So just, that's it.
I think it's a great conversation and I think it's, I'm glad that we talked about it and made sure that for our parents that it was discussed tonight. So there's obviously interest on everyone's part to get as many kids in, in school as possible that are interested in being in school. I think the question is just like how you said, Randy, when do, how, how quickly can we get the information and what exactly is the pathway? And that's what we need to figure out. So, but I appreciate everyone's feedback and everyone's comments. I, I just want to check if board members have more questions about the plan itself. Anything that was discussed tonight before we move on to, board chair updates, sorry. No? Well, thank you, um, thank you principals for being on tonight and teachers for being on tonight and presenting your perspectives. I appreciate it. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this plan. And to Owen and Julie's point, I think this is a, it's a good thing. There's complications, it's stressful, but this is a really good thing for our students, for our parents, for our teachers. So I just appreciate the hard work that everyone has put into it. Our administrators, I know you've been working really hard trying to get this pulled together, so thank you. And our teachers, I know are working extra hard every day. So thank you very much to all of you. I have a couple of updates for the community. Our next board meeting is March 8th. And we're going to move it into the district office conference room to be in-person. Our board meeting room is still under construction. So we're going to send out some more information about that to the community. And then additionally, I wanted to just remind the community, you should have received an email about it. But there is a survey out right now to get stakeholder feedback about our new superintendent search. So if you go to edinascool.org backslash, and then it's S U P T, um, search. There is an online survey there and you can fill it out anytime between now and March 4th to do stakeholder feedback. And we do have some focus groups going on, but in case that you aren't part of one of those, we have, Lenny, I'm going to put you on the spot for this, but when is the open community forum focus group? And if you don't know it, that's totally fine. It will, there will be information about it, but I just wanted to make sure people understood the different ways they could give stakeholder feedback.
Let me see if I could find it. I do not know offhand.
Okay, sorry, I should have let you know beforehand.
This is Chair Ellenberg, it's Nicole Tisher. I'm, it is on Wednesday, um, early evening. And if people are interested in signing up on that same page that you mentioned, they can click the Google form and sign up. And then there'll be a randomized process where we select a number of those people who signed up for that community forum. But it's, uh, it's, I want to say seven o'clock from 6:15 to seven o'clock on Wednesday night. But I might have those times off just a little bit.
That's not tomorrow night though.
No, I'm sorry, a week from Wednesday.
Oh, okay, I, I thought so, I just wanted to make sure. Nope, no, thank you. Um, John, do you have any superintendent updates?
I do not.
Okay, and then I wanted to make sure the board saw the information item, which was the superintendent compensation range for the search for advertisement and see if any, anyone had any comments or concerns about that information. Please. No? Okay, great. All right, well, thank you to all, all the board members for your feedback regarding this. I, I know all our board members have been working hard as well. So, and we don't necessarily all have the same perspectives, but I appreciate everyone's feedback. And everyone is working hard for all the students. So thank you to everyone here. And without further ado, I will adjourn our meeting. So thank you.